Noting the hour, I'm calling the Acton Select Board meeting to order. And first up is resident concerns.
Yes, Tara from Mass Ave here. I have a question and then a comment. And I'm concerned about the ICE presence in Acton. And I have a statement that reportedly is from Police Chief Kogan. And in it, it says, "Acton police have a duty to respond when other law enforcement agencies request our assistance." And I want to ask the board, where in our charter, or our bylaws, or your direction as elected officials, have you directed the police to respond when other law enforcement agencies request our assistance? I don't need the answer now, but I'd like to understand that because the Brookline Police Chief signed an agreement with the Sheriff's Association, which has contracts with ICE like bounty hunters. They get money by person to incarcerate people and transport them. And so Brookline was one of many police chiefs that signed an agreement to respond, to assist other agencies. He's since resigned, when the citizens understood that he had signed this without permission of the Select Board to direct the police to do that responding. So I think we need to look into that. Because it's my understanding that the police's, the Acton Public Safety Officers' responsibility is to the law first, to the Constitution first, not in aiding other agencies. And so protecting our residents from unlawful abduction is, I believe, their duty first before assisting other law enforcement agencies. So I urge you, because I've heard that at least one of you guys have said, "There's nothing we can do." Well, I believe there's a lot you can do. I provided a bunch of references to legal opinions and recommendations, and I hope you look into them. Thank you very much.
Any other resident's concerns? Oh, online caller?
Hi, Nijan Datta, One Cliff Drive. I'm calling about the Article 7, that we finally voted to authorize $150,000 for that. I mean, it's my opinion that-
Nijan, if you could back up, you kind of cut out, so we didn't hear the first thing you said.
Okay, so Article 7, which was, you know, the override got defeated, and then we passed $150,000 to re-study the thing. And I did mention at the meeting itself, like, I did not want the $150,000, because I think you and the finance committee are so close. I think you are on balance on the right side here, because I don't know what the consultant is going to do. Because you can't come up with a building that is much smaller. It'll be meaningless. It'll be ridiculously small. And so, you know, but even that, it's almost like, that's not even the main thing. The main reason it's going to lose again, if you bring it forward, is because of the school committee overrides that are coming up in about two years, and after one that happened last year. I think the focus really, if you want the DPW building to pass, to push back on the schools, to make sure that their expenses are tailored in such a way, and they are whatever budget cuts or whatever, that the citizen cannot have an override in two years going forward. I mean, just a family member, when I mentioned about this thing, and I said, "Oh, there's an override coming up for the schools in two years." And she goes, "Oh, forget it." I mean, it's just like, it's just, I don't think people want to hear that. So if you want your DPW building to go through in a meaningful way, you know, about the same size as what you already have right now, I think it's almost like, you've got to put that aside for now, have the school committee make sure that their budgets can get pushed back, so there's no override for a few more years. And then, I feel confident that the citizens will vote for this DPW building. I think the combination of last year, the coming school overrides, and this DPW building is a failure destined to happen. So before you spend $150,000, I think it's imperative that the schools do their part first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other resident's concerns? No one online?
Madam Chair, there are 10 people online, no one with their hand raised.
And I don't have a lot. I just wanted to mention the forum, the community forum that's taking place in this room on May 21st. There's a great panel. They'll be talking about immigration policy, and, you know, Chief Kogan will also be here answering questions. So that might be a good time to get some answers. I also wanted to say how I thought town meeting was more or less successful. It was a long two nights, but it's unfortunate that the DPW and the town HVAC items didn't pass. But I feel like it was pretty successful and fairly tame. Tom, if you have any?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, speaking of town meeting, it wasn't as well-attended as last town meeting. And I think, that's something that we can continue to look at, but I do want to just recognize the work of the town staff that put the whole thing together. It's a full-service production that has to go, has to happen that day. It's like a live TV show, and all the staff that you need for that, except there's hundreds of people that are in the studio audience. And so, it was a lot of work, and I appreciate the moderator and her approach to running the meeting, and I thought it went really well. But I want to recognize the IT staff, the facility staff, the management staff, Tom, and everyone else that worked really hard. We also rolled out new clickers, which I think the learning curve is always, there's always a little bit of a learning curve with a new device, but I think people got it pretty quickly. And we got those about four days before town meeting. So, we also learned about them really quickly, and I thought they did a great job. So, just wanted to mention that. Switching gears to tomorrow, we published a notice over the weekend that there'll be substantial roadwork, I guess I could say continue to be substantial roadwork, in Kelly's Corner. Community lane, which is now formally or officially called Carol Spinney Way, although the street signs are still Community Lane, so the street that connects Main Street to Mass Ave, there's going to be major reconstruction of that road over the next two weeks. And so, we initially said that the road would be closed all week. It looks like they're going to be trying to keep one lane open for most of the day, but it's better off to people planning on it being closed. But the businesses will be open. We're working with them. Patricia Costa, our new Economic Development Director, is working with Kristin Gishard, our Planning Director, to make sure that each business knows what's happening and how they'll be impacted, so that they can tell their customers and navigate it. And it's going to look really good when it's all completed, so thank you all for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements. The Water Resources Advisory Committee is going to be presenting a public workshop on stormwater management and funding that stormwater management. They're going to be doing a preview tomorrow at the Finance Committee meeting, which starts at 7:30, I believe, right here in this room. A public workshop will be held on Thursday, May 29th, also in this room. And I believe that's at 7 o'clock. You can find out by checking out the town website or the most recent municipal monthly. There are a couple of events upcoming at the DPW site at 14 Forest Road. This Saturday, May 17th, from 10 to 1, is the Monthly Polystyrene Recycling Day. And then on Saturday, June 21st, the Hazardous Waste Day. And again, this is the only hazardous waste day that will be happening this year. I also would like to share an update on some guidelines that municipal staff have received on how to respond if approached by Immigration and Customs Enforcement agents. So this is, you know, legal requirements for them that have been vetted by Town Council. So ICE agents may enter public areas of municipal facilities without restriction, but they do not have access to non-public or staff-only areas unless there is a judicial warrant signed by a judge. They are not to disclose any personal information or records of community members, again, without a valid judicial warrant. If they are presented with a warrant, then they will contact the department head or council. And they do this all the time, maintaining professionalism and composure. They're not obligated to answer any questions by federal agents without having legal counsel present, and they are expected to document and report the incident. And they will be receiving training relative to this. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware that the town is committed to providing a safe and welcoming environment for all community members, and that they will be adhering to these protocols to uphold community values while also complying with legal obligations.
Thank you. Any other member minutes? No? Any? Jim?
My heart's really full with all the ICE activity. It's, it just really is causing a big rearrangement in my brain that we have, you know, looking at, reading the news and looking at court cases, we have agents of the federal government who are doing things that courts are often fining after the fact to be illegal. And it's clearly, you know, this, it was very easy to get a really big turnout. It was wonderful to read about and see the pictures, for a rally right in front of Town Hall to say, you know, "We're going to keep Acton families safe." But I'm still wrapping my head around the notion that we have, we have people who are, you know, dressed in the normal uniforms of respect, who might be doing illegal things. And it does not surprise me at all that the community is, you know, also vibrating about this. I saw, you know, many different, some reliable, some unreliable reports of ongoing ICE activity today. And I don't doubt that each of those had, you know, a fair number of residents show up to express their concern, to document what's happening. And so we're entering uncertain times. And I don't understand yet what the right role of the Select Board is in this. So I look forward to a future agenda item where we can sort that through, maybe with some guidance from Town Council and questions from the board. So just, that's where I'm at.
So moving on to our public hearings, we had one scheduled for 7:10, which this applicant has requested to schedule to June 12th, 2025, at 7:10 PM. Oh, we need to open the hearing and only continue with no deliberation. Should we open the hearing? Do we need to open the hearing?
Yeah, you would have to read the notice, and then one of us would have to move to continue.
The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 12th, 2025, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 205 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually at actonmass.gov/meeting/sb. On the application of suburban glass and mirror for a site plan special permit, number Under zoning bylaw section 10.4 at 60 Powder Mill Road, the proposed project consists of redesigning and expanding the existing parking lot. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online and at Acton Town Hall. Yeah. David?
Yeah, I move to continue this public hearing to June 16th, 2025, at 7:10 PM in this room.
Is it June 16th or 12th?
It says 16th.
I have on this notice, the 12th that I read. I don't know if it, so, is it?
Could Lisa comment whether-
16th is a Monday.
It's the 16th, okay, sorry.
So my motion is correct.
Oh, 16th is a Monday, thanks, Michaela.
It takes a village second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
So moving on to our second public hearing. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Mass General Law 140, Chapter 40, Section 22, the Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 12th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, and by video conference and call-in for a livery license for a news transportation operating out of 120 Parker Street, Unit 14, Acton. From a computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting, www actuonmass.gov/meeting/sb, or from a telephone, dial 646-876-9923, and enter webinar ID 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raised hand feature to request to speak. Is our requestee Anu's transportation here? If you would like to come to the microphone, you could either stand or be seated, and just tell us a little bit about your business.
Yeah, I like to open the small business livery service transportation. People bring to their food shopping, doctors, if I'm to the home, bring back. That's why I small business start to open it.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Any other members have questions? Jim?
Will you also be serving as a Lyft or an Uber driver?
No, not Uber driver. Not Uber driver, just be myself, and a small one at the beginning, and then later it's getting bigger, then put the CLC, what they call, and just the beginning right now, a small one.
Great, thank you. No more questions from-
Any other questions? There's definitely a need. Sure?
I move to approve the livery service license for Anu's Transportation, 120 Parker Street, Unit 14.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any notes? That was unanimous, yeah. So now, we're going to take things a little out of order. We are now, you can see, we're having, our planning board has joined us, and we'll have a joint meeting to approve the housing production plan.
Is the Planning Board Chair going to call their meeting to order?
Yep. Good evening. Yes, I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting to order, 7:22, May 12th, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. James, would you get us started with that, please? Thank you.
Yep, okay, so I can see a few people, and if there's somebody I'm missing that's off-screen, I'll-
Yep, I can help you with that.
Help me out a little bit, but just to call the roll, Patricia?
Present.
John?
I'm here.
Is somebody to your left?
So to my left, I've got three more folks.
Oh, sorry.
We've got Michaela, Sam, and Ron.
Okay. Michaela?
Present.
Sam?
Present.
I don't know if he said "present," but Ron?
Present.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, James.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kristin.
Hi, good evening, Select Board and Planning Board members. Tonight, I'm excited to be here to help present the final draft housing production plan for Acton, which will help guide Acton's housing goals for the next five years. It's an exciting thing, I think, to think about the last plan, because Acton just recently surpassed one of its housing production goals of meeting the subsidized housing inventory. But that's not the only goal, and there are other goals and desires and needs of the community. So tonight, we're looking for the Planning Board and Select Board to discuss, hear a presentation from our consultant team, and also take a look at the comments, public comments that have been reviewed, or that have been received over the last two weeks during the public comment period, and then consider adopting the plan tonight for submission to the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. Over the last few years, Acton has had robust conversations about its housing needs and desires. And this past year, Acton really focused in on two housing initiatives, the housing production plan, which is in front of you tonight, and Habitat for All, which resulted in the open space development and inclusionary zoning adoption at the last town meeting, just last week. And we're fortunate to have worked with JM Goldson, who helped us through both of those public planning initiatives. They're joining us virtually here tonight. We have Jen Goldson, the owner of JM Goldson, and Noah Harper, who helped us with both initiatives. But they're going to walk us through a presentation on the final plan and help to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. We're very happy to be here. Noah has a presentation we've prepared. Is he able to share his screen? Perfect. All right, great. Well, we're very happy to be here. Just let me know if the audio is coming through, if you folks can't hear me or see our presentation, let me know.
Sounds great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I'm Jen Goldson, Founder and Managing Director of JM Goldson. It's a planning firm I established in Boston 19 years ago this summer. And Noah Harper is one of our, is one of our community planners, and his specialty is housing inequity. Noah's worked really closely with Kristin and her staff to prepare the plan. And we also worked very closely with the Regional Housing Services Office. They prepared the housing needs assessment, as well as other pieces of the plan, and we all worked, you know, very collaboratively, along with the Oversight Committee. So we're really happy to be here, and we'll try to make this brief, so that you can get into any comments that you, questions that you have, and other comments. All right, next slide. So I will talk, hopefully, if this advances, go ahead, Noah, you can advance that. Yep, perfect. I will just talk a little bit about the work that we did, and the engagement that we ran through. Next slide. And then Noah's going to take it over. So what is a housing production plan? So you've done several of these. In fact, we helped you with the last one, and can't remember, maybe the one before that. But it looks at your housing needs, it looks at how Acton fits into the regional housing needs, and it also looks at development constraints, things like zoning barriers, environmental constraints, historic preservation, as well as other constraints, like infrastructure, for example. And then it looks at local capacity. What boards and commissions and capacity do you have to basically implement this plan? And then, and then the main thing that we'll focus on tonight is the goals and strategies. That's really the policy piece. And if you go to the next slide, what we wanted to just review first was the former housing production plan goals. So we listed them here, there were six goals, and you'll see that we really did tweak them based on the, based on the public comment and based on the work that you've been doing. You've been doing a lot over the past five or so years, since you first created this former housing production plan. Next slide. The former HPP strategies, we have these categorized into what you've completed, what you're, and what you're in progress on, essentially. And so the completed strategies are conducting a study to establish and fund the down payment program, and studying and passing new zoning to allow compact housing near the Computer Rail Station in South Acton, and passing a bylaw to limit fossil fuel infrastructure. So these were things that had come out of the prior housing production plan that you did complete, so really, job well done. Sometimes we do these presentations, and the community hasn't been able to complete for various reasons, not usually for lack of trying. So that's something to be proud of. And then you have several strategies that are in progress right now. Rezoning vacant and underutilized areas, maintaining housing choice community status, and reviewing and enhancing affordable housing overlay districts. Next slide. And then just more ongoing things that you've been, you've been working on. Expanding ACHC's capital improvement program for seniors and disability access home modifications. Revisiting mixed use for Kelly's Corner and Great Road to allow infill development and as well as redevelopment. And then biannually assess the accessible housing needs with local organizations. So, a lot, a lot to be proud of, a lot of momentum. And let's go to the next slide. So I'm going to hand this off to Noah Harper, who will just go over, you did lots of community engagement for this. You had several forums and focus groups. So I'll let him go over those results, and then, and then, and then he'll go over what's in the, in the updated plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Yeah, I will just briefly touch on, and I spoke to you guys, I believe, back in February, or maybe it was early March, and gave a little update. So some of this is old information, but just to review the community engagement we worked on with this HPP update. Three community forums. Since we last spoke, we did a third in-person over at the library, had some folks come in and learn a little bit more, and provide input on those draft goals and strategies, which were really helpful. And then, of course, in the last two weeks, also released the draft plan for public comment, and really, and received a handful of comments on saying things like, "Supporting for mixed use zoning down in South Acton," or "Interest in expanding municipal wastewater capacity." So really, I've been trying to take what we're hearing from folks, and helping that to mold the goals and strategies that are coming from your last housing production plan. We heard things like, yeah, support for expanding municipal sewer, annual municipal, intermunicipal meetings to implement the plan. We want it to be something that doesn't just sit on the shelf after we put all this hard work into it, but something that is implemented, that is helping to achieve the goals that I'll be sharing in just a moment. And here's us at that in-person event, again, with folks going around the room and providing their comments. I believe there was one suggestion the last time we spoke about ranking the draft goals. So we had a board there, and folks, folks really ranked rezoning underutilized land in the village centers and commercial areas for mixed-use housing as the highest there. Didn't have a huge amount of turnout, but I will note that at our second forum as well that we did virtually, we also asked for folks to rank it virtually, and that was also ranked rather highly. We've got nine goals and 23 strategies. I'm going to touch on just one or two from each, because I want to make sure we have time for you guys' questions and comments, but we'll launch into it. Number one is perhaps the most important, the reason that we're here working on a housing production plan, which is maintaining Acton's subsidized housing inventory, that 10% that you so recently were able to get to, and ensuring that it stays about 10%. And that means that Acton, with meeting a few other requirements, can have a little more say over affordable housing development in the town. It's a proactive housing production plan, and there's a lot of really cool ideas for how Acton can help promote affordable housing, and both maintain existing subsidized units and create some more ones. Number two is encouraging a diversity of housing types for a range of income levels, ages, and abilities. And I'll just say, one big strategy, number five, that comes out of this, is looking to rezone vacant and underutilized areas and village centers, or other activity areas like commercial corridors for multifamily and/or mixed-use housing, places that it might make sense where folks already are, where there are amenities. And we're hearing interest from folks throughout both this community engagement process and the Habitat for All one that Kristin had mentioned. People want to live in a walkable place. People want to live in a walkable place, and so continuing to think about that, to consider where that could be, or promoting and enhancing existing ones. Number three, touching on another comment that we heard in just the HPP public draft comment period: prioritizing resources, thinking about infrastructure capacity for new and existing housing development. Wastewater, I think, always comes to mind here, and that goes back to strategy number three, which is studying options for municipal sewer expansion consistent with action items and other plans, like the 2024 South Acton Vision Plan and your 2021 Rapid Recovery Plan. Number four, Acton's made such great progress on this, as Jen shared, but just encouraging the construction and renovation of sustainable, climate-friendly, and resilient housing. Part of that is building off another plan, your 2021 Climate Action Plan, continuing to support and educate residents, providing those incentives, those requirements for new buildings, so that residents and businesses are continuing to improve energy efficiency and transition to cleaner methods of heating and cooling. I'm just touching on one or two from each of these goals, and I'll note that there are many more than I could cover today. So, please do take a look through, and I'm looking forward to hearing thoughts on that. Number five, again, going back to the theme of locating a mixed-use residential development in places that it might make the most sense, where there's existing infrastructure, where it's walkable, where there might be places folks want to go to. It's an idea in planning called smart growth, of being thoughtful about where you put things and prioritizing more compact development that helps to conserve land as well. Strategy number nine is a little interesting. It's actually monitoring the progress of your MBTA overlay district over in South Acton and making sure, is it working as intended? Are you receiving building permits? Are you hearing from developers that it's not great? Or are there other parts of it that might need to be tweaked? And it's just sort of a best practice, a housekeeping idea of monitoring how your existing zoning is working, and then using that to inform potential future areas that you might be considering putting some new zone in. Number six is more on the capacity section of collaboration and coordination with existing community groups, increasing Acton's capacity to implement housing initiatives through enhancing that local and regional coordination and community outreach. One idea here, and I think this goes back to the idea of implementation, I make sure that this plan is realistic, that it's something that doesn't just sit on the shelf, is hosting an annual intermunicipal meeting for local boards and committees to come together, go over the plan. And what I'll just add is, in this Goals and Strategies chapter, we've created a matrix that goes through every single strategy and who the lead agency or organization in the department might be, who supporting ones might be. We've also phased in what fiscal year that we would suggest considering working on these initiatives. So, it's not overwhelming, it happens all at once. All suggestions, of course. But these are things that can be reviewed at this annual intermunicipal meeting. And some of it's inspired by local municipalities, just a town or two over. Like Concord hosts a housing roundtable on a quarterly basis where they talk through various initiatives and make sure folks are on the same page, figuring out how resources can be shared, and just really another best practice for this kind of work. Number seven, an important goal to ensure that you can maintain that 10% SHI, that you can maintain the existing affordable housing in your community, continuing to preserve and support the long-term affordability of existing affordable units. This is encapsulated in strategy number five, which says, if new scattered site units, say this is just if it was financially feasible for, say, the housing authority or the ACHC to acquire a new unit and make it affordable, to create a small capital reserves fund, suggested from RHSO, maybe $30,000. And this funding could help to fund, say, if a new roof was needed or some other capital improvements for the unit, to make sure that it stays in good repair, that it can stay occupied, that folks are able to stay there, and you make good use of what you guys already have. And just got two more for you also. Hopefully, I'm not taking up too much of your time. Goal number eight is about stabilizing housing, providing services and resources for vulnerable residents, maybe those that are living in housing that might not be accessible or at risk of homelessness. One idea there is strategy number 20, which is coordinating with local organizations to promote housing initiatives. Like, one idea is working with Habitat to fund those critical home repairs, ensuring that seniors that maybe want to stay in the community but are having issues with accessibility, which is something that we heard in the survey, get a chance to do exactly that. And our last one, last but not least, is combining new residential development with conservation through the creation of market rate and affordable homes that are densely clustered to preserve the open space, natural resources, and scenic vistas. Most recently, saw that at a town meeting, the revisions to the town subdivision regulations have been approved, adding a little more density in areas that preserve up to 60% or 60% or more for open space. So, while that strategy is also in the plan of implementing those Habitat initiatives, we also have another strategy, strategy number three, which is exploring creating a policy to support conservation land purchases that set aside a portion of that just for affordable housing. So, maybe there's a way to similarly do both, to conserve more land and use a portion of it for affordable housing in town. And that's a real big, I think, just guiding theme in our goals and strategies, is how can we conserve both the land, how can we preserve folks that want to stay in the community, and also promote more affordability here at large? And so, with that, I'm going to unshare my screen and pass it over for any questions that you all might have for myself, for Jen, or for Kristin. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Noah. Any Select Board questions? Jim?
Sure, thanks. It's great to get this all laid out like this. Appreciate it a lot. I think my first question might be the longest one, so maybe I should ask it first. I asked for, I asked over the weekend for a list of comments that have been made by the public in the official public comment period that ended recently. And we have that now in our packet. And you summarized the concerns about infrastructure limitations and some particular areas and an emphasis on rehab over new construction. And I wondered if you could sort of go over if and how those concerns are either are reflected in the draft plan or will be reflected in the plan or shouldn't be reflected in the plan, just sort of so we know where we're at with those three concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'd say, two of them, I wouldn't even categorize perhaps as concerns. They're more advocating for, first one being mixed-use development in South Acton, which is something I think we encapsulate pretty well in our strategies. The second, saying, yes, we do need to consider expanding municipal infrastructure, like wastewater treatment capacity for new housing, and basically urging going along with that, that goal and strategy. Did receive another comment just yesterday, asking for additional time with the public comment period, which I believe we had opened for two weeks. Only received the three comments there. And I will say that that other third comment also asked for additional consideration of sort of the idea of the town buying down existing units to become affordable. And I'll note, as Jen had gone over, the old strategies from the last Housing Production Plan, feasibility study was conducted when that wouldn't be feasible at that time. And when I got a little into the weeds there on that capital improvements fund, it's sort of an idea that if at some point that does become feasible down the road, we would want the town to consider, if it does go and acquire a unit to become affordable on a scattered side way, to make sure to save some of those funds. So, I think that's a sort of a quick way of going through those three comments and how we felt that they were encapsulated in the goals and strategies. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thanks. So, then to the specific comments. You mentioned in a couple places an intermunicipal meeting, which I think of as between different municipalities. But what you're mentioning is boards and committees within Acton. It's sort of, maybe it's more of an intra-municipal meeting, or maybe it meant it would include the Acton Water District? I was just confused by the phrase "intermunicipal" and wondered if it meant that I was missing something about how we needed to work with Concord and Littleton and Westford and so on.
No, I think you just really seized on a lapse in language right there. I think "intra" would be the word for it in that strategy, bringing together groups inside the town. Yeah, rather than that regional collaboration. But yeah, I think that's a good tweak that we could really easily go in there in place.
The next one was in number seven goal and in some other places. There's this phrase "existing affordable housing", and I think we always go through this confusion about whether we mean, you know, deeded affordable housing, you know, or housing that's naturally affordable. And we have an interest in protecting both of those things. So, I wonder if we want to be clear in number seven that we mean both naturally affordable and the deeded affordable housing.
Absolutely. I think being clear and precise with our language is always helpful. And sometimes in presentations, I'll call it capital A affordable housing if talking about deed-restricted versus our more broadly affordable housing that might be affordable to folks that don't meet those income requirements or is affordable at a point in time. So, I think that's a great idea to be a little more precise with our language there in goal number seven.
Thanks. Another general process question is, so, I think I understood the role of the HPP more clearly when we were under 10%, because I knew it was a requirement of the state. It gave us a little bit of extra slack in terms of, you know, it was an important sort of contractual piece of what we're doing with the state. Now, I know we're doing more than that because we're also talking about our own internal goals and process, but I wondered if you could say anything more about what our obligation is to the state at this point, now that we've hit our 10%? And with respect to that, the request to, you know, open up for comments again, whether there is now a consequence with the state if we, you know, if for some reason we all decide to delay the actual filing of this?
Absolutely. I think one general way I like to think about it, and I'll pass it over to you real quickly, Jen, is when you're over 10%, the HPP helps you to simply be proactive about housing, maybe in a more general sense. There's these statutory requirements, but also folks have so many issues and concerns and needs with housing, and it's wait for the town to work on that. It's not something the state's going to come after you and say, you didn't do strategy number 20. You're falling out of safe harbor. But I'll pass it over to you, Jen, to go in a little more detail.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, the Housing Production Plan is always an incentive-based plan. The state has no, you know, penalties for not having one. You don't need a Housing Production Plan. It's only if you feel that having the ability to be in safe harbor would be beneficial to you as a community, rather than reaching that full 10%, then the Housing Production Plan allows that certification, showing that incremental progress. But for communities that have already reached 10%, it's really something that's completely voluntary. Sometimes communities feel as though perhaps if we fall below that 10% in the next five years, this will put us in a position where we can then have the ability to reach that safe harbor and be certified. Other communities feel like it's just a matter of good practice to be, you know, always forward-thinking, keeping our housing policies fresh. But either way, whether you're below 10% or over 10%, having a Housing Production Plan, as Noah said, doesn't require you to do any of the implementation that's suggested as a part of the plan. So, I hope that answers the question appropriately.
I just had a few additional comments. We also here at Acton apply for a lot of grants, and I have been very successful with that. And the Housing Production Plan, having an active one, is very important because that's one of the boxes that you typically check off for a lot of the grants that we apply for, not just in the Planning Division. And I'd also add, you know, the subsidized housing inventory, although it's a really good metric to keep your eye on, it's also including all of the units in a 40B that are rental units. So, it's not really giving you a clear indication of how many deed-restricted affordable units you have because all, like, for example, Avalon or Powder Mill, every single rental unit is counted towards that subsidized housing inventory, basing it off of the denominator of overall housing in Acton. So, it's just good to keep that in mind, that there are still needs in the community. And so, it helps us to kind of think of what are those needs and how do we want to tackle them?
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. Onto my next comment. In goal number two, it talks about housing for a range of income levels. And I think that might be an inappropriate euphemism. I don't think, for example, that we actually have a need or an interest in creating more, you know, really expensive houses. The market seems to be taking care of that just fine, maybe a little too well. I think what we want to encourage is, you know, housing options appropriate for low- to moderate-income households. Yeah, so that was my thought about goal number two. I didn't know if you had wanted to comment on that or not.
My quick comment would just be, yeah, I really like, again, the precision language. I want to make sure when we say low to moderate, there's those official ways that we measure it. There's also those households that earn a little bit more than, say, according to the official guidelines that still can't afford to buy a home or rent in Acton. We want to make sure that we can encompass maybe low to moderate to middle-income folks that, like you said, are not our huge high earners potentially, but everyone else who might not be well-served by the housing market. But certainly, I think that's a great point, that to be a little more precise in who we're going for.
Thank you. There was a few places where sometimes the language was about expanding municipal sewers. In some places, it was about expanding infrastructure. In some places, it was about expanding wastewater solutions. And we've had this conversation a lot as a Select Board, because we're also sewer commissioners. And I would say that in many cases, what we really mean is expanding wastewater solutions, whether they are on-site or, you know, a packaged treatment plant or actually expanding our sewer system. Because we are up against, we're at a very steep cost curve now about increasing sewer capacity. So, it's a real challenge. And often, for a lot of housing and other needs, we're now, you know, needing or even encouraging the look at, you know, local solutions. So, there was that. And maybe this last one's a question for Kristin, but it was a hangover from the previous Housing Production Plan. This was in goal number nine, where it talked about preserving scenic vistas. And I don't think we included any language about that in our recent Habitat for All project, which was just talking about changing the way we're doing, you know, subdivision permitting. And I'm wondering, did that language come from somewhere, and do we need it?
Great question. So, Habitat for All, through that planning process, we heard a lot about this, people having the desire to have a little bit more regulation on the street tree plantings, vegetative buffers that people see from existing roads into new developments. So, what we were able to do was incorporate that as a zoning bylaw change for the special permit option for inclusionary zoning. And with the requirements, it requires larger trees to be planted at the time of construction. But the next step that we need to do is update the subdivision rules and regulations with the Planning Board at a public hearing. And so, that next step will include updating the buffer zone from the frontage along the roadway into the new development area in the property. So, throughout the public engagement period, we have specific design requirements that we worked on with the Design Review Board to create those regulations. So, they have not been adopted yet, but they're ready to be considered by the Planning Board and the community.
Great. Thanks so much for that explanation. You know, I think where I got confused was when I hear the word "scenic vista", I think of like a long-distance view. And I was thinking, oh, are we going to try to, you know, like, preserve, you know, long-distance views by cutting down trees? And I thought, no, that can't be what they're talking about. And I thought, no, that can't be what they're talking about. So it's good to hear that, and it's good to know that that becomes clarified when you get to rules and regulations. That's it. Thanks so much.
David, do you have any other comments? Alyssa?
Thank you. Thank you, Jen, who disappeared, and Noah, and Kristin for this presentation. I do want to just make a comment about the public comment period. I think that having it open for a couple of weeks when those two weeks coincided with the town election and the town meeting is unfortunate. So I think if there isn't a penalty and we have capacity for opening that back up again, that would be great. Or even, I know there were a lot of comments that were left on posters and sticky notes at public forums and workshops, if, you know, even those could be incorporated. Because it does look a little sad with just three folks who have submitted public comment on this very important document that's going to guide us for the next five years. And I'm thinking back to the 2020 update, and we had 246 unique comments that were tabulated and responded to. So I think that it is important to have the community input somehow incorporated if that's, you know, the input that they've already provided or reopening the comment period. I also wanted to just say that I really love the inclusion of a strategy to expand or enhance the Acton Community Housing Corporation's Capital Improvement Program and the establishment of a capital reserves fund. It's so critical that we not only support people to access housing, but also keep it in good repair. And I have a question about that, but I just want to make one more comment before I ask that question. Another thing that I really appreciate is this introduction of an annual intra-municipal meeting so that we can track progress on our goals. Because I've always wondered about that. We have this great table with organizations, entities, departments that are assigned each of these strategies. And then, you know, where is the mechanism to have folks update other folks in the organization about work that they're doing? And an opportunity for potential collaboration, I think, is key. So that meeting would really help. My question about the Capital Improvement Program, my understanding is that the ACHC funding is only available to folks that are in subsidized housing. I could be wrong about that. But if that is the case, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can open it up to folks who are low-income, meet some sort of threshold. Because I'm thinking about the folks who have been in town. They have homes that they've raised families in. They've been here for 30, 40, 50 years. And yet, they're at a point in their life where they're on a fixed income, and they may have limited funds to be able to maintain their home. And it would be great if they can't access that program now if they could moving forward. Thank you.
One thought I would have there that I think could relate to an existing strategy, thank you so much for your comment, is the idea of partnering with Metro West Habitat on their Critical Home Repair Program. And that can also include accessibility improvements, but also state-of-forty repair projects. And I will defer to Jen because she's an expert on CPA funds and things that we can do for existing affordable housing. But I think for those that don't live in existing deed-restricted, capital-y affordable homes, we would have to think a little bit more outside of the box there. And there'd be more strings attached to plans. And I believe we do go into a bit of detail there in the write-up of the strategy, but I just want to urge some thoughtfulness there and creative thinking.
So I can add a little bit to that as well. I think, you know, Acton's Acton Community Housing Corporation, you're correct. Because the source is Community Preservation Act funding, that's the reason why. But I think Noah answered that question well in calling out Habitat for Humanity, which is now posted on the Regional Housing Services Office website. So if people in the community are qualified, they are eligible for those funding sources, and they should reach out to Habitat for Humanity. But I think there's a lot we can do to try to connect people and broadcast that and make sure that we're advertising things like that. In your comments about the public comment period, you know, two weeks is typical. I hear you. I think Acton has a lot going on at once, which it was a little bit different than the previous Housing Production Plan. I think that was really the only main initiative happening that year. And since that time, I think Acton has continued to take on more and more initiatives and endeavors. So I think there's a capacity thing there as well. But you're right, during town meeting time, it definitely pulls people away. I will note that Noah has incorporated all of the public comments from all the sticky notes at the last engagement session. So the last engagement session displayed all of these goals and strategies and provided an opportunity for the public to comment on them in person. And they were slightly modified, some language tweaks here and there. And then what you see in front of you now is the result of that. And then putting all of the plan together with the data analysis collected by the Regional Housing Services Office, the review of the previous plan, and then the goals and strategies as a final draft is what you have in front of you tonight. In terms of what would it mean if we pushed it off, we've looked at what would happen if we looked out to the 19th. If we went to the 19th, that would be our drop-dead date with having to request a shortened timeline from EOHLC. So we would have to submit a special request to them to shorten their timeline to 30 days. So that's what we would be looking at. We would need to basically have a special request in order for our plan not to lapse, which has implications for some of our grants that we've applied for.
So Kristin, what you're saying is that the public input from that forum is already incorporated into this?
Correct.
Okay, so I apologize for missing that.
Thank you. I know we're talking about the Housing Production Plan. I think this is great, but I just want to make note of the Economic Development Plan, which is sort of running alongside of this and also, you know, calling for infrastructure, whatever that looks like. That was my comment. Yes. John, would you like to?
Thank you, Noah and Jen. I don't really have, for me at the moment, I don't have any questions. I just think it's important for me to share that anytime we can have more chances for folks to share their ideas that are citizens of our town, the better. And I think that was just one thing that strikes me continually, even when John was talking about the, perhaps the numbers were lower at town meeting, was there is a sense of, you know, talking to my students, sorry, my wife and my family, not my students, sorry. Just some important decisions being made by all of us. But in some ways, town meeting had, what, 300 people? It's a long-winded way of saying, I just hope we continue to have ways that we can get together and talk as citizens and obviously as the boards that we work together. So I'm just sort of picking up on that energy that we need to be very noticeable and aware that I want to get as much input as we can. This is really important to me. So, but thank you, Noah, Jen, for sharing tonight as well. So at the moment, I don't have any questions at the moment.
John, do you want to say anything?
I had a couple of questions. If the rehab loan from CPA or however it's done is restricted to deed-restricted properties, and we want to increase the number of dwelling units in the town, and we want to support our seniors or whoever is struggling with their housing, why can't we offer to help someone make an ADU in their home in exchange for a deed restriction? That way, some folks that could never afford to do an ADU might be able to do that and get a little support for themselves in the meanwhile. Have someone else live in their house with them in a separate unit. That's just an aside. I do agree with Alyssa's thought about expanding the time that people have to comment on this because I'm on the Planning Board, and I didn't know we had a comment period for the HPP. Maybe it was because we were all distracted by town meeting and so on. I think we do need to expand that and maybe ask for the 30-day grace period from the authority that you needed from. I think it's very important that all those folks that got to give a little bit of input at the beginning get to say what they think about the final product. And that's, while we're all really happy that everybody was there commenting, and it's not everybody, because there were only maybe 20 people at each of these things. In fact, the last in-person workshop was how many attendees?
Oh, just 11. Not too many.
Yeah. So I'm thinking, you know, we need to expand this a little bit. I would be very happy to see an expanded comment period on this. There was something else here I wanted to ask. I too had questions about scenic vistas. I was thinking Grand Canyon too. But, you know, that's not it. Thank you. I think that's what I have to say about it.
Kristin, did you have answers to the ADU questions and the?
You know, I think it's a, I think I was just going to answer part of it, but I think some of it would need to be investigated a little bit. Anyone is eligible to deed-restrict their home and sell it to an eligible buyer or to create an ADU and put a deed restriction on it. Anyone could do that today, but it's very costly. So if the town were to provide funding to an individual to do that, we would have to look at how that process would work out because then, you know, how does that individual qualify for those funds over other people? So that's something we'd probably have to seek counsel on unless, I'm not sure if JM Goldson has seen that before, but.
Yeah, you know, the town of Barnstable has implemented an affordable ADU program for many, 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 many years. And we've done some work down in Barnstable, helping them with their housing. And there are just some logistical challenges. The first is just the level of admin required on the part of the town or some other organization that you might, you know, want to basically pay to do this for you. But to verify incomes every year of all of the tenants living in the ADUs has been challenging. It just has taken a lot of staff time to try to verify the tenant incomes. They, I don't know how many ADUs they're up to now that have been affordable, but they used to have dozens and dozens. Each ADU was created as a mini 40B, if you can believe it, as a comprehensive permit. And they would take a group of ADUs and go forward to the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and through a comprehensive permit, get them to be basically affordable and counted on the subsidized housing inventory. So just the verification of incomes was real challenging for the staff. They spent a lot of time hunting down paperwork from every ADU tenant. But the other piece of it is, it's tricky for the property owner as well because the property owner, in order for it to actually be affordable, it would need to adhere to the state's affirmative fair marketing requirements. And that means that, you know, typically that requires a lottery to choose the tenant that lives there based on, you know, several criteria. You could have some local preference, but the property owner then, you know, may have some issues with not being able to have full control, you know, a little more limitation over who they're choosing to live in the unit. I think that in Barnstable, they have worked through that. But it is a concern of property owners just feeling like they might not have total control over who's living on their property because they would need to then adhere to the Affordable Fair Marketing Plan and implement that. So it's just a little logistical challenges in those regards to comply with, you know, the Fair Housing Act and to verify those incomes as well. So just some things to put out, not impossible. Barnstable would certainly be a good community to talk with about the logistics of it. Thank you.
I want to thank Noah and Jennifer for all the information that you put out. I moved to Acton almost 50 years ago, and I'm now beginning to understand the town's profile. And I'm very proud to be living in this town and this state as well. So thank you for all the information that you guys put out. I'm sure it took a lot of effort. It was very useful. I also tend to agree with Alyssa and Michaela. I think it's very important to widen our sort of community feedback into the document, into our plans. And Michaela raised a very good point, which is, a lot of people gave a lot of input, but they haven't seen the final product to see how some of the input did go in or how it might have changed or whatever. And I think it would be good, on the other hand, I want to make sure, Kristin, that we don't miss the window. So you need to balance both of those things. And, but it would be nice to get some more input to sort of, you know, finalize things a little better. But thank you a lot. John?
All right, thanks. Thanks for inviting us to the hearing. Yeah, so a lot of good information in the report. I had a couple of thoughts. The first one is, I strongly agree with the idea of somehow encouraging more input and comment. And I don't, I'm not sure if another week would really do it, but in this particular case. But I think certainly in the future, we need to fix this, that nobody is basically, to me, if 11 people come to a major feedback session on a major, you know, element of the town, namely housing, people aren't participating. So we need to come up with new strategies to let people know what's happening and to encourage them to give input. So certainly, I would encourage figuring out a way to at least publicize it a little more and give at least a few more days for people to comment. I have a couple of specific thoughts. The first is Jim's comment. I strongly agree and maybe nuance on it. So the question, you know, it is one of the key infrastructure challenges if you have more development, is wastewater treatment. And there is this challenge of the steep cost curve we face if we have centralized waste treatment that we've, therefore, I think three proposals have already been turned down in the past few years by the town, by the citizens. So I would suggest, I agree with, I support going back and doing more study, but maybe not quite in the way that it was prescribed in the goals. It was pretty prescriptive to follow on some previous studies. I would say try a whole new approach and go back and screen across the various types of waste treatment that you can do. And I think there's new methods to do that now, to take the data and maybe use, find a firm that can do, use AI to do screening in an intelligent way and come up with some approaches to either local or centralized treatment. I think it's important, if we go back and do another traditional engineering study, we'll spend we'll spend, I think the amount that was mentioned in the report was $150,000, $200,000 on a traditional engineering study that'll look at maybe one or two options. We need a way to look at more options at a reasonable cost to the citizens. The other thing that caught my attention was this idea of making a database of all properties. As someone who owns property, I'm not comfortable with having building databases which potentially, unless we're, first of all, we're sure the databases are secure because this is going to have a lot of sensitive information in it and we're sure it's not going to get sold or given to people who want to use it for different purposes. And I'm not sure why we need it because we have data sets of, you know, the grand list and all sorts of other things like that. So I think we need analysis, but I don't know if we need to build databases. Yeah, I think it's one final comment. And when I went through that whole list and the matrix of which people were going to be responsible for which things, there are a lot of things on that list. I don't think you can manage that many things on a list in the space of a couple of years. I would recommend, what are the, you know, what you presented here was good because it was just, I think you had nine goals. But when you expand out the list to the whole report, it's what, 37 or more things on a list? What are the important things that everybody agrees we're going to do and then have a way to report back on it every year, I think is really important. Yeah, so those are my thoughts. Oh, one final comment on the, I also have been in the town for a long time and I'm getting to the age where although I'm fortunate in my personal situation, you realize what being on a fixed income means. And one thing that's not considered in this report is probably one of the biggest issues that can make the town more unaffordable is constantly increasing taxes. Because the older you get, the less you're paying for your property and the more you're paying in taxes and you're on a fixed income. So I think all of these things that are proposed need to look very carefully, especially things like wastewater and stormwater management, how to do them effectively. And that should be part of a study like this. What is the burden of the taxes and what are the proposed items going to do in terms of imposing cost that will further exacerbate that situation?
Pat, you, yeah.
Pat, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Just two comments. I echo everybody's thanks. This is, the public outreach may not have been well attended, but I think those of us who took advantage of it learned a lot. So I don't know how to solve that problem, but I do think the quality was well worth the effort. And I've been to some that aren't so good, so I'll leave it at that. Is there any way with this idea of an intra-municipal meeting that we could have some kind of community engagement piece as part of that? Some of this idea of getting feedback and, say, we had a meeting next year and we said of the list of the 35 to 40 items, we just can't do them all, so let's focus. That would be a good time to have community engagement. So if you could help us structure a little bit more than, you know, a bunch of people sitting around the table. And as part of that, could we, if we have collected names of people, and I honestly don't remember whether we signed in for these focus groups or not, or the workshops, but if you can get that list of emails, maybe that's a start. Maybe we can do a little outreach, at least to those people. If they put their boots on and came in in the rain, then they probably cared enough to come back. So that was that one. And the other one I would like to ask about is capital, money. Some of these ideas are very enticing, but the reality is we pretty much use up all our CPA money already in various programs, and I'm not sure those are ready to be abandoned. I think they've been, most of them probably pretty successful. Where else can we go? And what kinds of suggestions would you have us looking at if we wanted to do one or two of these, at least experientially? If not, could we actually fund it? So that's it. That's all I had.
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in if it's okay.
Please.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think including engagement in the roundtable is a brilliant idea. And I think you're right, it needs to be more than just a bunch of people talking around a table. If community members are going to be invited, you want to have some kind of interactive way for them to engage. And thank you for the compliments on our workshop designs. We do pride ourselves and we always, you know, try to help get the word out, but sometimes for various reasons, people don't come. But I also think if you do the roundtables, having guest speakers is often another way to draw people in, something that's, you know, like you said, not just about people talking around the updates on what each committee's doing, but some kind of a guest speaker. And then you could include some kind of an interactive engagement activity to be part of it. So something to think about for sure. And I think we can revise our write-up to include those, some of those ideas, so you can start to think about that. I think, yeah, absolutely, we can give you the list of who signed in. I think we collected that at every event. And then in terms of funding, you know, Kristin is more in tune with the funding available. I know the One Stop application provides access to various resources, which is how this was funded, this project. Different, you know, state funding, such as the Mass Works and other things like that, can fund some of the other, it depends on the nature of the project. But there are, I guess, you know, more state funding that I would look for, not so much federal funding at this moment in time. And I hear you saying that the CPA funding is already being allocated for other kind of ongoing things that you're funding over and over again. So Kristin, you may have other ideas than I just kind of blurted out, but that's all I could think of at the moment.
Yeah. I mean, I think you hit most of what I would say. I can add a little bit to that. In Acton, typically every year, the Acton Community Housing Corporation seeks funding for their, like, set-aside fund. And that's a resource that is used when a nonprofit housing developer like the Acton Community, like the Acton Housing Authority or like Common Ground has a project that the town wants to sign on and support. And so thinking about how the town can utilize CPA funds to make sure that every year what ACCHC asks for is funded, or even trying to look at how they can increase certain categories of funding for, you know, for things like that. And I think, you know, the different one, you know, the One Stop grant application has been able to support infrastructure components that really help projects like Common Ground be a reality and like the Housing Authorities Project, because they're looking for every bit of money that they can to make deed-restricted, affordable housing possible. And so they're really trying to pull every little piece together. So I think all of those things combined are important to think about when we're trying to think of funding.
Thank you. Kristin, I just had a quick question in that, do you have active applications now that if delaying this would muck those up?
We have applied for the Housing Choice Community Designation for the town. We submitted that. I'm not sure what their, what the, I don't think we've heard back yet. And I can't remember what the deadline or what the response back for acceptance of the application is. That's the one that I can think of.
I believe the One Stop is due the first week of June also. So that may or may not be impacted by this directly, I'm not sure.
And I will add, you know, I'm all for as much public engagement as we possibly can because that's actually one of my favorite parts about my job. That's what we enjoy planning for the most and doing. We did have, you know, I don't remember the number in the townwide survey that went out earlier in the project, but just a few weeks before that survey, we had the Habitat for All survey that went out that had about like 500 responses. And when we look at the town meeting attendance, you know, which was around 300, I think that we, I feel good about the amount of comments that we've gotten. I think we can always do more. And, you know, I think that's something that we're continually trying to do. The plan was sent out two weeks ago to all boards and committees as well as our community contact list. So we have contacts with all local religious and nonprofit organizations in the community that kind of then disseminate the information out to their local groups as well as the town website. But again, it's, you can never have enough. And I think we're always here to support that. That's part of our job as planners, so we hear you.
Thank you. Jim?
I had one thought about process, which was that rather than trying to figure out here exactly what happens next with, you know, dates and comment periods, if one or both boards simply, you know, don't take a vote so that we're not approving the plan yet, then I totally trust the chairs and staff to work out what's next. You know, whether that's a quick outreach event, whether it's more announcements, whether it's whatever. And then we do, you know, and then we have to plan either, you know, separate meetings or another joint meeting to actually do the approval. So that was going to be my process suggestion.
Yeah. So what we would suggest, if the boards wanted to extend the public comment period, we kind of tried to plan ahead to see what we would need to do if people felt that way based on the comment that we received today. And it looks like the 19th is like our drop dead. So if you wanted to open it back up, we would reach out to EOHLC to see if we could try to get them to shorten that timeline. And then we would need to have the meeting on that night because I believe that is the next scheduled select board meeting. And that's assuming planning board members are available to meet in a quorum.
David? Oh, Michaela, do you have a comment?
We've been talking about sewer capacity a lot, but nobody has mentioned water. And I really am concerned that that was, that big piece of everyone's lives has been left out of this plan and these goals. And I really would like to call in Acton Water District and others so that we really understand what this means to increase our population so much and what we would do about it, about water. Because as we know, our water bills have gone up tremendously, even in the face of measures to help reduce that usage. So what will we do about water?
I can comment. That was a great, great comment, Michaela. I think I would refer you to goal number three, which is prioritize resources for infrastructure capacity to ensure that sufficient capacity exists for new and existing housing developments. And in this, we talk about develop and implement a targeted plan to allocate resources for the modernization and expansion of water, wastewater to runs common, and electric infrastructure for new cluster and mixed-use development. So it goes on, but that does address that.
So once out of the 100 pages, you've got water.
It's a main goal. That's one of the goals, the part of one of the goals. Yeah.
So does everyone feel good about May 19th? David?
I have several things. One is I don't think an extra week is going to make that much difference. You'd never be able to call a public forum in a week. I also want to point out that the forums at the beginning of this process were well attended. They were better attended. Why that is, I can't tell you, but people came in the beginning and they gave their input into the process, and then they didn't come out back after the draft. I don't know why that is, but there were lots of people involved in the process all the way along. I also want to point out that the town consumes 14% less water than we did a decade ago. So I think we should wait another decade and then it'll be down 30%. So, no, the reason our water bills are a lot is because the Water District has prioritized removal of PFAS from our waters. And so it's not so much a quantity thing, but they've also actually put things in place to increase capacity as well. So I think the current, we can, like I said, consume 15% less water now, even though the population's gone up in the past decade. So I think water is not as a big concern. I also want to point out that when we're talking about the cost of wastewater, that the last proposal we had in front of the town, which as people pointed out here, lost, it was less expensive than what the school district has invested in the septic system for the boardwalk campus. So, and that system would have served the boardwalk campus as well as the people along Mass Ave. And right now, the septic system at the boardwalk campus emits too much nitrogen, and that's a potential problem, right? So they've invested more money than we would have invested in hooking them to the sewer, and we still have problems there. So back to the forum thing, I don't think an extra week is going to make a huge difference here. People have had a chance to do this. I love Pat's suggestion to, in the intra-municipal meetings, to include public engagement. And I think we should do that.
Oh, Alyssa and then John, sorry.
So I would still be supportive of opening the public comment for another week. David, you said we couldn't organize a public forum. That's not what we're asking here. It's just sending out another newsflash, sharing information that this draft is available to comment on. Because like Michaela, I miss this. The newsflash, well, the all-boards-and-committee email said, was sent out on the 28th, which was, you know, the day before the election. The newsflash came out on the 29th, which was election day. And, you know, I was a little preoccupied with, you know, the election and town meetings. So I apologize that I did not open up and read that all-boards-and-committee email. Does all-boards-and-committee include the Water District? I know that the district manager is on the open space committee, so he would have received it. He's also on RAC, so, but is all-boards-and-committee, does that go, I know it goes to the schools, does it go to the Water District and the Housing Authority and, I don't know?
I believe it's all, it's just the boards and committees that are under this government structure. So I would say no.
It does go to the Housing Authority? I think we should send it to the Water District. The things that we would announce to, because I know the school gets it as well. That might help improve communications. But I would be in favor of taking a vote on the 19th and just sending out a newsflash and a social media blast. And the folks who are concerned about the lack of public comment can also help with that outreach.
John?
I was just going to add, can I just hear the, and for those of you that know me, I always do this because I need to hear it again. I'm supporting on the 19th, but what exactly is that going to mean? In terms of what we're juggling or the dates? Can I just hear that again?
I think just getting more public outreach.
But, sorry, I guess my, more specific, what was the fear of, why can't we go past the 19th? I just want to hear it again. I know you've probably told me 10 times.
So the 19th would give us exactly 30 days to allow EOHLC or the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities to have 30 days to review. So they have, from what we understand, taken that up upon special request, but we need to make that special request. We know that it's possible to make that request. And so that's what we would need to do. But beyond that date, it would be under the 30-day review period.
We're ready for public comment, if you'd like.
Tara Dunn here. And first of all, I want to say that I, if that was my idea about the ADUs, I'm going to take it back because I meant to fund people's non-40B, like we've already subsidized. So what about the people who aren't subsidized? We talk about equity, but equity is a mention way at the end of the report. How about the people who are struggling to stay in Acton? We could have a program using municipal borrowing, not CPA money, so it's limited to only 40Bs, to help people stay in their homes, make them accessible, get their repairs, and you can have a deed, you can have a restriction or a lien that upon sale, it gets deed restricted. Okay? So. So just to clarify that, thank you about the comment period. Last week, last year, it was like six, last time, five years ago, it was like six weeks. We got two chances at the draft. I think it was a much better document because of that. In terms of the dots on the things, you know, like eleven people, six people driving the majority of, of, of a plan like this, I think that's just terrible. I think that the increasing the senior tax, the income levels on senior tax relief, that, 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 right now, the, the income level is at forty thousand dollars. Try paying taxes in Acton and still living on forty thousand dollars, okay? I think that if we have affordable housing and our programs and policies are set for moderate income for affordable housing, that's what our senior tax relief should be. Eighty thousand, hundred thousand dollars a year. At least do the analysis and see what it, the impact is on working families compared to the people who are struggling. Ninety percent of this, this plan, what I got through on it, because I didn't even realize it was a deadline, because we, we have, we've, we've spent months before. Suddenly, it's a two-week deadline. I, I opened up the agenda for today and it said approve the plan. I was like, wait a second, where's the discussion part of after seeing the plan? So thank you for that. But ninety percent of this plan is about new building trickle down. You know, I just don't understand why we keep doing that. We say we want equity, and yet our policies are not about equity. It's, it's charity, not solidarity. A trickle down just does not work. If we're going to have a commitment to affordable housing and helping people that are most vulnerable, we have to actually do it, not depend on the market and we'll rezone and hope for the best. You know, that's just BS. I'm sorry, I, somebody's got to say it. Wow, did I do everything? I think I might have done everything. Anyway, yeah, so I hope you open the comment period. I don't know anybody that, that gave comments this time. And last time, I knew at least fifty people that, that gave comments. And I could get more people to comment if we had time. I, I really, the thing I didn't even say, and by the way, we're going to approve it in two weeks, the announcement at least, I didn't read that. So, oh, and just Sam, I think, said, thank you for the profiles. The other doc, the other five years and all that, those, the other ones had the same profile information. What I loved about this one is it told you the difference. And so it says that we went from one percent black people to two percent black people. Yay us, okay? That's part of that is because it's a trickle down approach where you rezone and hope for people to make eighty thousand dollars a year. You know, maybe these things will happen, maybe they won't. The average black family makes sixty thousand dollars a year. Practically none of these policies, you know, or tiny little part of these policies serve them. So I, I feel like it's unfortunate that we hold out poor people, lower, lowest income people as, oh my God, look at this housing crisis. And yet our policies don't actually serve them. So in my opinion, we're using people as pawns to pass a trickle down policy so that we can feel good about ourselves, that we have an affordable housing policies, but they don't actually serve the people that we claim to care about. So I hope either we just say at the front, hey, we don't really care about you, but we're going to use you. Just be honest at the front, as opposed to people finally figuring it out. I mean, when I first did this, one last thirty seconds here. When I first joined up and I was elected here, I thought, I was like, affordable housing, that's great. I went around and placed out flyers to get people here. They got here and they were mad at me. They said, these affordable housing units aren't things we can afford. And I was just like, what? I had to face the fact that our policies weren't serving the people we claimed to care about. So I thank you again, and I hope, oh, the last thing is, just five seconds, is that if you want people to comment besides people who have lots of time, the luxury and privilege of time, go to them. Go set up at the apartments and ask them what they think, whether they think new building is going to serve them or whether they actually just want subsidies to help them stay in town, okay? To, to fix their apartments and stuff. Go to the senior center and ask them to take the survey on whether they think new building is going to serve them. Thank you. Last thing, if you're going to encourage new building, which we just did at town meeting, that we have to have a capital plan to serve that growth, and we don't. And that's really disappointing because we all have lots of smart people, lots of doctorates in this room, or masters at least. And so I think we need to sit down and have a real planning about capital. Impact studies don't include capital, so that's, that's a shortcoming. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to just add one comment is like, the, there are lots of different types of people that have different types of salaries. So anywho, I, I'm hoping that we can get, you know, an agreement on the nineteenth, if that's where we're headed. Yep.
Is that a, uh, vote separate? Select board discuss vote, planning board vote discuss, discuss vote?
Are we going to vote tonight or just wait for the next time?
Are we going to vote tonight or wait until the nineteenth?
I thought we were voting about the nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
I mean, voting to continue to the nineteenth.
Sure. We can do that. Yeah. David?
I think, I think we can just agree, we don't have to vote on that.
Yeah, I don't think we have to take a vote.
We can just all, it's not, it's not a hearing or anything. So we can just agree to, if you guys are available for the nineteenth, to have another joint meeting on the nineteenth.
So in that case, can I ask the planning board, folks? Uh, can, actually, and then I, I would, to myself, I don't want to forget Sam and James about next week, the nineteenth being available, because we need a quorum for the planning board. So I'm putting James and Pat on the spot first, and then Sam and Ron. Sam can make it?
Yes.
Michaela, Ron, me?
I gave a thumbs up and James is not shaking his head.
All right. So I saw Pat, yes, James at the moment, no. Okay. Still meets a quorum, right? For us, planning board? Okay.
Thank you, Kristin. Yeah, thank you.
These close guys have to adjourn.
You guys have to adjourn. We have to adjourn.
Or something.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's it, that's it.
Oh, Kristin, yep.
Mr. Chair, Planning Board Chair, would you mind just making sure the public knows that the planning board is taking a recess and moving to room nine?
Yes, thank you. We are taking a brief recess. The planning board's going to be moving down to room nine in a few moments. Thank you, Select Board, for having us here.
Thank you.
So it's my understanding that we're going to see you on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Same, different date, same place. Great. All right. So do I need to officially close the, my meeting? My planning board meeting? Okay.
No, no, because we're moving downstairs. Thank you, Noah. And, and Jen, is she still there? Yep. Yes, we have one final comment.
Um, the, um, so one of the next things that the Select Board does, you know, in June or late May or something, is to come up with our annual goals, short term and long term. So if the HPP Working Group, looking over their, you know, many goals, has a few that they think they would be particularly helped by being part of the Select Board goal structure, be great to bubble that up in our direction, either directly or, or through staff, whichever, whichever works better for your, for the way you work.
Thank you. So, yes, Alyssa.
I just have one more comment. I would like to express my appreciation for you recognizing that folks of a variety of ethnicities and races have a variety of incomes. So I know that there are statistics out there available that, that spell out average family income for white mass people in Massachusetts, Asian people and black people. But I want to recognize that there are plenty of folks of all different ethnicities who have low income and, and high income. I had a landlord in Boston who owned the townhome that I rented, and she was black.
So moving on to number six, announce public listening session for select board goal setting. Yep.
Are we doing number five?
I thought I, I was going to do it at the seven slot, but we can do it now.
I didn't know if somebody was waiting for that. No, that's fine, if nobody's waiting, that's fine.
I don't think so. Yep. I just swapped seven and five. Yep. Announce public listening session for select board goal setting.
So I, I believe the board, through Lisa's help, has tentatively set a goal setting meeting for June ninth, which is, which is just about a month from now. And so in the past few rounds of goal setting, the board made a point to announce that date several weeks in advance and invite public input and comments. And so I think this agenda item is saying just that. But I think that there was also in the past a listening session, which would just be a, a period of time where the board could have people come up and say, we think you should work on this, and we think we need more of that. And so given that there are only two meetings between now and June ninth, I think the, the board could invite the public to attend one of those for a listening session and start the listening now, I suppose. That, that's really all. This is just, just making sure it's out there and people know about it.
Yep. Should we, Jim?
One thing that might be helpful for that, if you thought it was appropriate, John, would be that, I, I, because I'd like to hear somehow from departments about key goals from the plans that they're working from, that they think would benefit from being on a select board goal list. So like, you know, the Housing Production Plan, the Action 2020 Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the OSRP all have really extensive goals. And some of those goals are just, you know, they're just going to be worked on anyway. That's not a problem. But some, I think, I'm imagining that people that know those goal, know those plans well would be able to say, you know what? We don't really have a way of, this, this one's important. We don't have a way of getting to it. So we'd like the Select Board to know that, you know, this one might fall off the table unless it becomes a, a, a goal. I, I'm, so I guess I'm wondering if that would be okay to include that as part of the, either as, as part of our public listening session or as a separate report from you about, about that.
Absolutely. We could do that internally. We have a department head meeting, maybe even next week, I think, where that can be initiated. The board also sends out, and maybe it's our office that does it, but every year, we send out an email to all boards and committees to reference that we just made earlier to that email list. I think telling people about the listening session. And I believe a newsflash as well. And so that's sort of hitting the volunteers, the general public. We, we could add a third tier, which would be direct requests for staff input. Because I've always tried to incorporate staff input, but if the board's asking it in a more direct way, that, that's even better.
And do we have a date? Yeah, you mentioned two meetings, that there's two meetings between now and June ninth. So do we need, do we want to select a date? Do you have a date in mind already?
So we can do May nineteenth, if, if our next select board meeting? Yep. It'll be a busy planning board, select board meeting. David?
I'm wondering if we want to make it June second, so that we have a little bit more notice for folks.
Okay.
But I, it could be either.
Do you want two sessions or just one?
No, no, I think just one session is fine. But I think it, the, the fact that this week in our next meeting is only one week away, it's just very short.
Okay. Yep, good, good. Thumbs up, thumbs up. June second. Then moving on to approve fossil fuel free bylaw waiver application. Sri Chatanya Somachi, Somachi to Betty Lane.
So before you is the first official application in the new process that was approved at the last meeting, from which a building permit applicant can seek a waiver from the fossil fuel bylaw. The way that this was presented is the, the information is before the board. And if, however you would like to proceed, we'll, we can work with the building department. I think at the last time that this actual application was discussed, there was reference to alternative technologies that may be available. In discussing that with the building department, there was some concern about UL listing and other things that electricians and the codes speak to. But I think that there's enough products out there, depending on the specific use, that there may be, there may, that may not be a barrier in this case. So that, that's really all I have from the building, from the building department, is that they, they're looking forward to hearing how you want to proceed with, with this one.
Jim, then David, sorry.
Thanks. Well, is, is the applicant online by chance? No, okay. So, um, so here's a slightly different version of the information I passed out last time. And I agree that staying away from particular electrical devices or kinds of stoves is probably a good thing. So I just looked at, um, you know, cooking implements, pans and pots. So we've heard about, um, two kinds of cooking styles that are used generally in India, but also all over the world where high heat is important. The first is, we call it tadka. That's, that's the Indian style where spices are heated up in oil. And there are, it turns out that induction stoves are actually selling really well in India. So there's a lot of information there, some of it in languages that I, I confess I don't understand, but there's plenty in English as well. And there are tadka pans that, that are flat on the bottom and are compatible with induction cooking. That is, you know, the, a magnet will stick to them and the heat, heat goes very quickly. And in fact, the, the word that I read is that, and that this is very different than the old, you know, electric stoves that we might have grown up with, which the difference is both that induction stoves are, can heat very rapidly, can drop the heat very rapidly, so there's a lot of control. And in fact, the highest heat setting for induction stoves is generally much higher than the heat that you can get out of, out of an electric, the old style electric stove. So you really can get the heat that you want. And sometimes the, the cooks, as they communicate with each other on various forums, say, you know, I had to learn how to not go to the highest heat setting and bring it down a bit to get just the right level of high heat that I wanted. The other, the other style of cooking that's, that's relevant here is, basically stir fry, which, which, you know, in Indian cooking, there's a, there's a kadai. Chinese style is, you know, like wok, but very similar. And those two are available with flat bottoms that are appropriate for induction, regular induction stoves. And the heat travels up relatively quickly up the sides. Although I couldn't find this in, in the kadai cooking, but when I read about wok cooking, there, there are people that are using kitchen style, little kitchen style blowtorches right before or right as the vegetables are being added to add that extra, you know, super high heat to give it, you know, a little bit of burnt taste. And that, that's, you know, this is, this is, there, there are millions of people successfully doing Indian and Chinese cooking on induction stove. So my recommendation is that we don't grant the waiver and that I would be happy, if the board wants, to pass on this information through the building department back to the, to the applicant.
I, I agree with that. I, you know, in the, in the, it'd be interesting to talk with the applicant. Unfortunately, they're not here. Most of the things that they mentioned in their request are actually, excuse me, better on, um, induction stoves. The only one that might not be is using a round bottom pan. But as Jim mentions, there are alternatives there. And things like pressure cookers and things like that, a stove top pressure cooker would work much better with an induction stove than with a gas stove. And it's easier to regulate, you set it and it works the same way every time. So, um, I, I, I agree that I, I think we should. So um, uh, I I I agree that um, I I think we should uh deny this appeal.
My thoughts are not so much on the equipment and the the waiver, but do we feel comfortable not having the applicant here? Should we? That that's my feeling. Alyssa?
So I would, I would agree that um, you know, I think that this request went in in March, not this application, because it wasn't available. The application is dated May 5th. But I'm super disappointed to hear that this information was gathered, but not shared with the buyer. I don't know if it's a homeowner yet, or if they've they've actually purchased the home. And I I don't, I don't think that it's appropriate for us to approve or deny a waiver without having that communication. I also don't think that it's um necessarily appropriate to ask staff to be the conduit for this information. I do recall that um, there was an applicant, I think it was um for Nine School Street, and someone reached out to them about um, the fossil fuel-free, you know, so I I I assume it was one of you, Jim, David? And and that person was very receptible, recep, sorry, receptive, receptacle, receptive to the information. Oh, you know, I didn't know this information, and yes, this would be something I'm willing to do. So I would be much more comfortable if that happened first. And I think it is appropriate to, unless town manager has a different opinion about how he'd like his staff to be directed, it seems um appropriate if the two of you have gotten this information to one of, to have one of you reach out to the applicant.
David?
So it it makes a difference to me is if the um, the applicant knew, do you know, John, if they were informed about the date of this our discussion tonight or not? Because if they chose not to be here, that's different to me than if they didn't know that we were discussing this tonight.
Yeah, so this is a process that we're just working out, and I think that's one piece of it that needs a little further clarification. That uh, I don't know that he was, that this person was invited specifically. I do believe that they know, they're they're aware it's being considered, but maybe they weren't provided the the information that they could come and speak to it. So we could, we could do that next time. Sorry. We'll we'll keep working on it.
Jim?
Um, based on what people have said, uh, I I'd be happy to have us delay the decision until the 19th and um, you know, reach out directly to the applicant, share the information I have, talk with him. And then if he wants to, you know, to come back on the 19th, he can, you know, uh, make his case. And if not, then we can just, you know, go ahead and vote at that point. I I it doesn't seem like a week delay is gonna make much difference.
Thank you. Dean, do you have, yeah, great, thumbs up. Thank you. Number eight, uh, vote to approve the issuance of $6,150,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 as more particularly described in the document prepared by bond counsel distributed to the board.
So let me please, if you don't mind, introduce this topic. This is a good, I think I mentioned this is a good news and not-so-good news scenario here. And I'll start with the good news, because I've made that mistake before. The good news is that we uh, our bond rating was reaffirmed, and it remains a AAA. We went out to the market uh for borrowing for some projects that Town Meeng authorized over the last few years, including the purchase of the Wetherby property. And we received a pretty good rate, considering the market these days. It was 3.5 effectively, uh, even though it was a little bit more than that on paper. And Marianne will be able to explain that. So that's the good news. In a market that we're in right now, getting a rate like that is pretty exciting. The not-so-good news is that our treasurer-collector, Teresa O'Leary, uh, has accepted a position in another community closer to where she lives. And so she she'll be, this will be her last uh big project for us uh as she transitions to that new role uh next month uh in a community near her home. So first, thank you to Teresa for her uh several years of service here. But over the last s- uh, year and a half or so as treasurer-collector and and other roles before that. And um, and I'll pass it on to Marianne, and I can talk more about that transition if if you'd like, but we can also just get to the the borrowing too. Thanks.
Okay, so real quick, is that on Friday, April 18th, John and a few of us, along with Lynn Welsh of Unibank, we met with Standard &amp; Poor uh for our rating call. And then on April 28th, we got reaffirmed for the AAA rating, so that was great news. And the reason why I say that is that that's used considerably for us to be able to go out to bond and get the great interest rate that John just mentioned, the 3.51%. We went out to bid for this bond on May 6th. We have two hours to respond with with any questions. There were 11 bidders, Raymond James, which is great. Raymond James was the awardee, and that is um, out of the 11, they were very, very close, but the 3.517% was the lowest interest. As John had mentioned, is that when you receive the paperwork, you'll see a interest rate. Another name for that is coupon rate. But because we are rated as AAA, we are able to um issue at a premium, and so the premium is approximately $427,000. And so with that is that the yield, which is the interest that you pay, overall goes down to the 3.517%. So that's great news, and again, we're able to do that because there are a a number of companies that um have their own internal policies, where they will only bid on AAA bonded communities. Some will go lower than that, but because we're in a position where anyone's looking to buy when we issue. So that's really good news. And also is that we were budgeting still for about 4.25%, so we're very happy with the 3.51 that we got. What we have to do tonight is that there is a pile of paperwork. I apologize for that. It doesn't take long, though. But what we do need the clerk to do is read the form of vote, which is right there on top. So Alyssa, you the clerk? You, it, it is the whole thing, but you'll see, I'm just going to go over just for a minute.
Just to make sure.
So I thought it was what was in bold from the email from Teresa.
That's the motion.
Okay.
And then you have to.
And I have to read everything else. Fantastic.
Can I just ask a question before she starts reading? Is, am I correct that the term here is 15 years?
Yes.
Yes.
She said yes. Yes.
Another procedural question. It looks like logically we should do the motion first before the clerk says all that stuff, or um, does it matter?
So that is correct. The instructions are right there. So the motion, and then it will be voted, 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 I the clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Well, in that case, I would move to approve the issuance of $6,150,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 as more particularly described in the document prepared by bond counsel and distributed to the board.
Do I have to do that? Jim could make the motion.
I second.
Or maybe should we should actually vote? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Great.
I, the clerk of the select board of the Town of Acton, Massachusetts, the town certified that at a meeting of the board held May 12th, 2025, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $6,150,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds of the town dated May 20th, 2025, the bonds to Raymond James &amp; Associates, Inc., at the price of $6,556,202.28 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on May 15 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. I have to read all of this.
You do.
2026, $300,000, interest rate 5%. 2027, $315,000, interest rate 5%. 2028, $325,000, 5% interest rate. 2029, $335,000, 5% interest rate. 2030, 30, $360,000, 5% interest rate. 2031, $380,000, 5% interest rate. 2032, $400,000, 5% interest rate. 2033, $415,000, 5% interest rate. 2034, $425,000, 5% interest rate. 2035, $450,000, 5% interest rate. 2036, $465,000, 4% interest rate. 2037, $480,000, 4% interest rate. 2038, $490,000, 4% interest rate. 2039, $500,000, 4% interest rate. And 2040, $510,000, 4% interest rate. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated April 29, 2025, and a final official statement dated May 6, 2025, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, then a notice stating the place or method of accessing date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building at which the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 to be at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30A, Sections 18 through 25 as amended. And if applicable, the meeting was called and conducted in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 as amended. That was a run-on sentence there.
So a motion was made by Jim. It was seconded by Alyssa.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Unanimous?
And now you'll see in that packet, there are signature pages, and they are color-coded for the select board to sign. And that could probably be done while conversations continue.
During this meeting or or afterwards, yeah. But you need, we need it, we need it before we go home, before you go home.
Correct.
Okay.
At once, can't we?
And so is that conclude the work that's needed?
That is. Thank you very much. Um, it is needed, as John mentioned, before midnight.
And so I just want to thank Marianne for her leadership and and taking this on. She she will be appointed as town treasurer tomorrow, one of the many hats that she wears. She's gonna need a bigger hat rack uh with all the hats that she has. But um, I think uh, she she's gonna continue to to be a big leader in this organization as we work through this transition in that office. And as you may have noticed, I don't know if you checked the job boards, but we posted that job earlier today. And we are excited to see if if uh, I expect to be able to have somebody on board before the end of the fiscal year in that role. That's about, you know, the time it takes to do the recruitment, have somebody give their notice. So that's uh, that's the plan.
David?
Do we need to appoint Marianne Treasurer?
No, it's um, it's a, it's not a select board appointment. In the past, we've had him on the agenda just for, just to keep you in the loop, but I I feel like you're in the loop at this point. The Master General Law says that that the town, that my position can appoint a treasurer or a collector, but only with the select board's approval, a treasurer-collector. And so earlier this year, or maybe it was about a year ago, we asked the board to confirm that you're comfortable that we have a treasurer-collector position. And so we still have that treasurer-collector position, and we're actively recruiting to get another one. So in the meantime, we'll appoint an interim treasurer, because the treasurer is the one who signs all the checks that go out to the town, to vendors and and to staff. And then an interim collector uh will be needed, but the tax bills aren't gonna be issued until August, so we can sort through that. And we have a strong team in finance, a good uh group of s- team members that are gonna help with this transition as well. It's not just Marianne by herself. Got a great team down there.
Thank you, yeah. And John had mentioned is that the warrant and the bills and the next time the tax bills go out, that would be the collector's signature on those. And it was when um, I think it was, time flies by. It was the confirmation, as John mentioned, the creation of the treasurer-collector, because at the time, the finance director was finance director slash treasurer. So that's when John went to you to confirm the treasurer-collector, the creation of. So it looks like it's going to, the signatures are going to be coming around to you, so thank you. And I'll just, I'm gonna be here, just do a couple more things, so I can just check in if there's anything else you need, John. All right. Thank you.
Would you guys mind if I did the consent agenda quickly? Is that okay? Yeah. And then we'll go on to number nine. Yep. The first item, approve amended town manager contract. 15, accept a gift of $2,500 from Town of Westford to support the 2025 Pride Festival. 16, accept a gift from McKinnon Printing Company for $2,603.50 to be deposited in the Acton 250 celebrations account. Approve a one-day malt and wine license for House Rabbit Network at Nara Park Pavilion, Wing 2, on August 9th, 2025. 18, authorize disposition of surplus equipment. 19, accept gifts to support the 2025 summer concert series and special events. $1,000 from Debra's Natural Gourmet. $1,000 from Dunkin', the Pesci Network. $500 from Kitchen Outfitters, $1,000 from Insulate. And finally, 20, approve filming permit for Anawan Studios.
Who moved to approve consent items 14 through 20 inclusive? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Next up, update on fire department pilot program and introduction of next phase.
Thank you. So earlier, at the beginning of this year, in January, we announced that uh we were starting some pilot programs to look at the way that our fire and EMS services are provided to the community. Uh, we had hired, using a grant, we hired a consultant to help facilitate this process. We've done some internal surveys, external surveys, and we're doing more of that as we go on. But one of the main components of this study program was to try different operational deployments of our fire staffing. Up until that point, we had been operating with four stations and spreading out the ten members on each shift amongst those four stations. And then, starting February tenth, we started a two-station pilot program, and we put five members in South Station, which is on School Street, and five members on North, in North Station, which is in Harris Street. And we essentially created, we split the town in half by Route Two, put an ambulance in each station, and then appropriately staffed other fire apparatus in each of them. And since that time, it's worked out pretty well. I think we have had some, actually some pretty serious fires and some medicals that were all handled pretty well. I think there was one in particular on Arlington Street, which is, which we were able to get to in a way that people were pleased with. Having more people on scene faster helped facilitate a better response. But as with anything, we were going to wait to see some of the data that we're going to get. We've been analyzing response data both in the past and then during that period. And one of the main purposes of this thing was to get the staffing in groups so that they respond to places, but also so that they can train more effectively. Instead of having to have to all drive to North Station, they can train in two groups, and also not be as isolated as they are when they're working in twos. They were working in pairs in each of the four stations, and it really created not a great, great environment for training, leadership development, supervision, et cetera. So, it's been great to have them all together, but South Station has never had five people in it. It was not built for that purpose. And so, they've been squeezed in there. They had to repurpose some spaces, and they have three. It's pretty tight. And so, I think that's the only thing that hasn't worked in the two-station model. Station Four, which the community just built in the last few years, was perfectly set up to have five people there, so that's gone, that's been perfect. But South Station, it's been too cramped. And so, starting on May eighteenth, I believe, the third week of May, which I guess is next week, we're going to be transitioning to a three-station pilot program to see how that goes. And that's essentially keeping North Station exactly the way it is, with five people in it. And then, no, it's putting four people in North Station and having three go to the other two stations, being West Station, West Acton Station, which is on Central Street, and South Acton, the same one in South Acton. Essentially, taking the responsibilities that are currently out of Station Two and splitting it between South and West. And we think that will, we think the coverage of the town will be comparable to the two-station model. And we think it's going to work out pretty well, and we're looking forward to trying that out. And I think the plan for that is to try it out for at least three months and see how it goes. And, you know, we've had some, we had an additional staff person added in the budget, which we're excited about. And we've had some contractual language changes in the collective bargaining agreement that were ratified by town meeting last week. And so, we think that we'll be able to have a little bit of a boost to our recruitment, which is, you know, vacancies have been one of the issues that also we've been working through in the fire department. So, all those things combined, we hope will work themselves out this summer, and we'll be able to decide whether it makes sense to go back to the way it was at four or keep rolling with three. I don't think going back to two is an option, unless there's a major improvement or renovation to that station or to one of the stations, because they're just not big enough. But I think we're pretty excited about it. The fire department leadership, the chief and deputy have really been engaged in this, the union leadership, the members, you know, there's all different types of feedback that we're getting, but generally, I think it's been okay. And they're excited to try out this next phase. And if anyone from the public that's listening hasn't taken our survey, we published a survey available at actonma.gov. We had three hundred fifty responses before town meeting, and we put the QR code up at town meeting, so maybe we grabbed a few more that night. And maybe we'll get a few more in the next few weeks. And then, that'll be part of the reporting that this consultant, it's the Collins Center at UMass Boston. They're going to compile data from internal surveys, from the external surveys. We're going to have a public hearing in June, which I will announce when I have the date confirmed, just to talk about the program. And we may get a hundred people in here, or we may get five, but we're going to basically lay out the whole thing and talk about the fire department services and see if there's anyone that wants to share feedback or questions at that time, so. So, the purpose of this agenda item was to announce the relative success of the pilot program so far and announce that we're transitioning to a three-station model starting next week. And I guess just a check-in point with the board to see if there's anything that you wanted to mention about this as we continue this process.
I will just take the opportunity once again to reiterate for the public that we do need a station in North Acton. So, the message is not that we built a station a few years ago, and now you're telling us we don't need it. That is not what we're saying. The location of that station was critical and had been known to be a need for decades before it was built. This is improving safety and improving working conditions. And hopefully, at the public forum in June, we can once again reiterate that message, because it's still floating around in the ether that this was not good planning on the town's part.
Will the Collins Center work consider facilities and their adequacy? Or is it just personnel?
I think part of the, it's about operations. So, it's not about, they're not going to bring in an architect to update our facility condition assessments that we've done recently, but they'll provide feedback on how they believe the facilities are operating effectively or not going forward.
So, I would be interested in not any kind of architecture questions, but whether the adequacy of facilities to the ideal purpose for operations. For example, if the ideal purpose of operations would be the two-station model, if only we had an extra five hundred square feet in South Acton, or whatever it is, right, it's probably, I'd be interested in that, right? Or whether is the three-station model better? You know, even if we had the extra space in South Acton, is the three-station model better? And is, do all the stations, and I know that the North Station is definitely, like you said, definitely sufficient for purpose, but the other two have, are a little bit different, and they have pros and cons. I mean, I'm interested in that, because, you know, as you know, at the, late last year, one of the things that we were discussing was improvements to the stations. And I think, you know, we'd want to make those from a well-informed point of view.
In the three-station model, where are the ambulances?
They'll, so they'll remain having one ambulance north of Route Two, one ambulance south of Route Two, and exactly which station it will run out of between South and West, I don't remember. But either South or West. Sorry.
Okay. I can take my answer later.
Dean, did you have something? No, Alyssa.
So, I just want to say that I second wholeheartedly what David said. If we're going to look at renovations or improvements to either South or West, we should make sure we know that an improvement to both stations is best for operations, or maybe a renovation and an addition to the South Acton Station is best for operations. So, let's not do renovations that are not going to get us to the ideal place.
Thank you. Yeah. So, moving on, number ten, review of town meeting results. Yeah.
We published a brief summary of each article on the actonma.gov/townmeeting page. The town clerk's office will be publishing their official town meeting minutes, which I think that used to be called the abstract. We're trying to use more common language, so I think we're going to call them the official town meeting results or something like that, so people know what it is. But I think every, you know, I think, so this is just an opportunity for the board to reflect on articles that passed or didn't pass and any specific directives that were given from town meeting voters through resolutions or other actions that were taken. So, I don't have anything in particular to present on that note, but there is something under item eleven that I'm asking as a follow-up, which I suppose I could cover now if, for efficiency. So, the town meeting approved three home rule petitions. One was related to the citizens' library and the memorial library. One was related to the distance for public safety first responders, and the other was related to bag, paper bags, surcharges. So, we want to get, particularly the fifteen-mile thing, we want to get that going soon as possible. And all the other ones, we certainly want to do fast, as quickly as possible, too. So, I'd ask you to authorize the chair to send this letter to our state representative to get the process going, because I think as soon as we send it to them, we can then start pressuring them to act on it. But until we give it to them, the ball's in our court. So, town meeting said yes. We just need to send it to Beacon Hill.
Dean?
I move we authorize the chair to send letters to our legislative delegation regarding the three recently approved home rule petitions.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? No nays? Thank you. Next up, update on DPW building, are we?
We're not.
Yeah, so there are other items that may warrant discussion.
A little left. Yes, Alyssa.
So, I would love to hear an update about the Article six A. Is that right? The town hall HVAC? Because I think a lot of folks are disappointed that that did not pass, that that failed by one vote, so I'd like to hear some good news about the timeline. I will report that I have already scolded the other voters in my house for not attending town meeting, because I think that if they had been there, it would have passed. And then, I just have one comment about the statement that was read communicating the board's recommendation on Article forty. Thank you, Jim, for going to a mic on town meeting floor to more accurately represent the board's deliberation. But I think just for future, we need to be reflective of what we voted, or not what we voted, what we discussed. So, I didn't think, David, that your statement did really characterize our deliberation, especially given that it was not a unanimous vote. So, I think just, you know, having included what Jim shared would have fixed that issue. That's it.
To the question of Article six A, which was the town hall's replacement of the HVAC system and emergency standby generator, we proposed that as a full project. We currently are at nearly, just about twenty-five percent design, and our cost estimate was based on that information. The borrowing authorization was proposed to be funded sixty or seventy percent from the general fund borrowing authorization and the remaining from the energy efficiency fund. The energy efficiency fund is appropriated by the select board. And so, we were going to come to you, maybe at this meeting, and say, "Good news, town meeting supported Article six. Can you just approve the rest?" So, one option that we think is worthwhile to keep momentum on this project, because it's another one of those things where it's not like we can decide not to replace the HVA system. There's environmental concerns that, it's not being comfortable. It's environmental, air quality concerns that we need to address. So, to keep the project going, we are recommending that the board appropriate some amount of energy efficiency funds to get us to the next phase of design and bring this project further along to get another cost estimate, which would be more refined and hopefully less. But if not less, at least it'll be more refined. And I think, at least from my perspective, what I heard at town meeting wasn't so much, "No, we don't think so." It was more, "Tell me more about it." And I think taking, doing this additional study and design work will allow us to better explain what it is and what it isn't. Because there was a lot of talk about geothermal versus air source and all that, and I think there's a lot more nuts and bolts and core components of the project that I think we'll be able to better explain next year. And if we do that, and if we, what did we say we needed? Not, we didn't need, I think it was a hundred and fifty? Two hundred and fifty, which will come, will come next meeting or soon to a meeting with an official request. But it's certainly enough, it's money that we have and that was allocated for this project. It would just be allocating in a different order than we had initially thought of. And it wouldn't necessarily knock us off schedule, because even if it was approved, it would still be a while before we get the project to where we need it to be. And if we have to wait an extra few months to get the full authorization, it wouldn't be as bad as waiting a year to just to have to start the process, to continue the process, I mean. So, that's the good news, I guess you could call it on this. Is there any other questions about that?
No, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted the public to hear. And also, the public should hear that every vote counts. So, come to town meeting.
Jim, do you?
Couple things. One is about six A. One of the disadvantages is that we, you know, hadn't, we hadn't prepared an actual presentation with, you know, background information. And, you know, there was a lot of, there were some misinformed comments made from the floor that we didn't really have time to go over. And having this come back to town meeting gives us a chance to, you know, do it right. Like, even to explain what coefficient of performance is, so that, you know, when somebody says, "Oh, you can't have three hundred percent efficiency," then you can explain, "No, what we mean is that for every unit of energy you pay for, you get this much energy out." And air source heat pumps and ground source heat pumps actually give you more energy out than you pay for, because you're getting the energy for free from the air or the ground. So, you know, that kind of thing, you know, it'd be great to be able to say that out loud at a town meeting. It's a chance to do some great education. I think that was also true for, I mean, it did pass the, you know, the other stuff that got pulled off consent, like the checkout bag fee. But I think it would have been better for us to have actually, you know, had a presentation prepared and, you know, and gone ahead and done it. So, I think the next time we have, we have to reauthorize a home rule petition. I mean, we can put it on consent, but we should expect to have to talk about it, and we could be prepared for that. And there was one other piece. Oh, yeah, yeah. So, we did pass, I think, I was going to double-check, because it was kind of late by then. But I think we, the town meeting narrowly passed the request to have a hearing about the Hayward and Main intersection. Is that true? Okay. So, that's just something we should keep in mind. It's, you know, presumably, we'll want to think about it and figure out, you know, how we want to do it, if we want to do it, when we want to do it, and all that. But I just wanted us not to lose track of that. That might be, you know, something for a new chair to take on, you know, sometime later. That's all.
Thank you. On six A, you know, I agree with what's said. I heard a number of speakers ask for things like cost breakdowns. ask for things like cost breakdowns and things like that for, for 6A. I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. And maybe in hindsight, something that's of a certain size in the, in the borrowing article might need to be brought out in its own article. Right? That, that was more expensive than what we usually do in, 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 in the composite article. And it's more complex than sidewalks. I think people, you know, sidewalks, first of all, less expensive, but sidewalks are pretty straightforward. We're going to build some sidewalks generally based on the order of need and, you know, we, we have this much money. But I think the, the town hall HVAC is a more complicated issue, and people had more complicated questions, and it was, it's expensive. And so, you know, I think, you know, people deserve the, the answers there. I was also very glad to see that town meeting funded the small appropriation, so we can cost out some things for the DPW building, right? Because I, I think that's extremely important, because if we're to go back to a future town meeting with some alternatives or at least some answers, right, to say that we, we looked into this suggestion, that suggestion, and some other suggestion, and either was, there was a big cost benefit, or it's about the same, or it's cost more, you know, we, we need to be able to have some answers to those questions for town meetings. So I think that's, that was, that's important as well.
Thank you. Any other reflections?
Just to follow up on what Jim suggested about having presentations ready to go for reauthorization of, of prior, prior approved home rule petition. There was a comment that was made that it shouldn't have been on consent. So I'm just looking, I mean, it did say in the summary that town meeting voters approved it in 2022 in the warrant, but not everybody was reading their warrant.
Yeah.
Like the folks who were holding all of the CPA items. So I think a lesson learned there is that we need to say it upfront. So, you know, that should be the first thing that's said, is that this was approved by town meeting in this year, and we need to reauthorize it because the legislature didn't act on it. And, and with whoever's the, I think, Dean, you're the liaison to CPC, just, you know, we're, we're going to have to always have what is CPA and what can it be spent on. And I know that there was a deliberate move to be more efficient and succinct, but people move into town, people haven't been to a town meeting before, and they're coming for some, you know, one thing that interests them. And so I think that in the presentation, it needs to be spelled out right at the beginning so people understand.
Dean.
Yeah, regarding the CPA articles, which gathered a great deal of flak this time compared to normal. The CPC chair spoke to me immediately afterwards, and the first thing he said was, you know, we were told to cut down our presentations. I think we cut them down too much. So I think the information that was presented in the warrant, we'd cut that down as well. I don't think there were many questions about that, but the presentation certainly. Those were important items to remind everybody where the CPA money comes from. The other thing I think is important, certainly for CPA, and there might be other times when it's important as well. With a big committee like that, we have sort of subject matter experts that shepherd these projects through the whole process. And they should be there and available to make presentations to explain it. And certainly, at least the disc golf one, that individual was not present. And there were a lot of questions about that. It was amazing that almost one of the smallest requests of, you know, $40,000 roughly for a disc golf received as much flack as it did. And it's sort of a, a repeat of the discussions had in the past. Well, gee, I don't play disc golf, so I shouldn't be interested in providing the opportunity for anybody else. Well, you know, I, I don't play soccer, and I, over 50 years, I've paid for a lot of soccer fields and pickleball fields, courts and what have you. I mean, it's, we're all a community. You know, a lot of this discussion goes in, in great detail during the CPC process. CPC meetings are always very open, and you welcome everybody, and we have very few attendees. So it's too bad more people aren't clued into this. But lessons for next year.
David?
Yeah, there's two minor things also about CPC. One is, I'm, I'm wondering if after a requestor makes their presentation to the CPC, maybe the CPC could remind them, if, if we approve this request, you should plan on attending town meeting and to answer any questions. So all the town requests, you know, the recreation director is there, or another town staff member is there. But the, the ones that are requested by private organizations, they really need to be there to represent themselves in cases, I mean, the town meeting has legitimate questions. And the other thing, which I mentioned to the town manager afterward, is that we might want to group the debt service things together at the end of the CPC request. So they can't really be held. It would cause us to default on a bond, which is bad. And so, and also, they've been pre-approved by town, by town meeting. It is true that, and the town manager reminded me, that, you know, every year we have to vote on any debt service, whether it's part of the general budget or whatever it is. But it really, we can't say, okay, now we don't want to pay for Wright Hill anymore or something. That's not really an, an option. So maybe we should group those and, and mark them in a special way in the warrant that says previously approved. That, I think one of the things different this year is we now have three of them. And so, which I think is the most we've ever had, I think ever, because it's the most I remember since I've been in town in the CPC. I'm sure it predates me, but if it does, just by a little bit. So, anyway.
All set?
Yep.
Now, update on DPW building project.
Well.
Déjà vu.
Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how'd you like the play? The, I, I think it was, you know, there are a couple of things that caused us some problems. I, and I don't know how we would address them when we come back and do this again, which we are going to do this again, because this is not an option. But I think certainly a lot of people were confused by the, the process of the ballot first and then the vote at town meeting. There was misinformation that was spread out throughout the community that somebody somewhere said that if the ballot vote fails, then it's not even going to be discussed at town meeting. Well, that was certainly not ever said by anybody at this table. So I think, you know, that certainly stirred up the folks. And, you know, you can certainly get a lot of folks that have a lot of keyboard courage on Sunday morning and just bomb you with stuff. So I think when we do this again, if we have a situation where we have the ballot before the town meeting action, I think it's important to make sure that there's a very clear statement in the warrant, exactly what will happen, no matter which way the, the vote goes. Because I think, because of the misinformation that had been spread around, most of us got accused of all sorts of nefarious things and double dealing and, you know, unfortunate comparisons with, you know, the regime in Washington DC, which, you know, was totally uncalled for, but that's what happens. So I think that's, that's one lesson that was learned. I think, you know, I'm, every big project that the town has done has required multiple iterations. The, so I'm, I'm not surprised by what happened, disappointed but not surprised. Interestingly enough, I've had a number of people contact me afterwards and have been disappointed as well that the project was defeated and have volunteered to help. So I think we've got, as we move ahead, we'll probably have to get the building committee back together again. Still got some other folks that are interested in serving on the building committee, folks that have not been on the committee in the past. So might be coming back to try to expand the committee a little bit more, especially if we can get more folks that are, we had a lot of technical people on the committee this time around. I think we need probably some more political people, which is one of the things that happened fairly well when we got the North Acton Fire Station approved. So I think we need to, to do a little more of that community outreach and probably have some more folks on the building committee as we move forward. I'll leave it up to the town manager for his ideas about, you know, how we approach what we're going to do next with the 150,000, whether a few of us get together and talk about this and then go to a building committee or, or what the process is. I haven't figured that out yet. But I, I think that we'll be ready to come back with some kind of a plan next year. And hopefully, we'll have a better result. You know, it's disappointing not to get the 50% at, at the ballot, but we didn't lose by that much, at least on the ballot. So I think there's, there's hope there. And I think that as we educate folks about the needs and start to explain some of the decisions that were made. I don't know what we could have done that could have swayed the finance committee. We responded to every question they raised. We adjusted the size, the scope and the cost of the building. But it was just, there was a brick wall. And, you know, negotiation on these things takes two parties. And if only one party is willing to negotiate, that, you know, you're not going to move very far. So, but I'm hopeful. We just keep going at it. I'll see if John or Tom have any comments you'd like to add, especially about how we move ahead with that, the appropriation we did get.
So we've been, we've been talking a lot since that night, even that night, about what we would do going forward. And we do have some ideas we want to bring forward. Also informed by the select board's goal setting, I think that goal has been on the docket for the last four or five years in different places. And if there's any changes to that, it would be helpful to know before we dive fully into it. So that's, that's less than a month away. So I think between now and then, we'll have some, some ideas to share about, about how to move this forward. And we have the OPM under contract, and this additional funding could be used for design. Anything else you wanted to add?
Just one thing. There, there was a lot of confusion, too, about the actual ballot and the way that, that it read. And it was confusing to a lot of folks. So I was just curious if there can be any tweaking about it, anyway.
Well, I guess the town clerk and the town council talked about that. And I think they're, in the past, well, I've only been here for a few years and only won such vote. And I think the only thing that was significantly different between when we asked for North Acton Fire Station and when we asked for this, is that there was a big title at the top of the ballot that said North Acton Fire Station, and then all that legalese. And so, because if you remember, there were three that year. And so if you put all three without any titles, it would have been confusing. So I think something as simple as that would have maybe made a difference, just to kind of frame the voter of what they're actually seeing, instead of having them read the hereby or whatever, whatever it said. Because it is, it is confusing, but it is, it's required to use that language. But we certainly should take the opportunity before it goes on a ballot again to see what other additional information we can put on there. But I think we need to make sure that it doesn't, you know, it has to be factual, objective, and nothing more than that. But I think we could do it.
Thank you. David, and then Jim.
Yeah, I have a handful of things. I think we can also add a summary to a ballot question, right? So if, so that, that's, that's another alternative. I, you know, I, I would like to see a start, a part of the process for us to do a planning division-style outreach with, with the interactive sessions. I, I think we need to engage the public a little bit more in this, in this process. And I think that the planning division has been really successful, and they've kind of honed their skills over the past several years. And I think, I think that we could learn something from them. I think we're going to have to be really judicious with the amount of money that town meeting appropriated. It's not enough to really cost a lot of different alternatives. We're going to have to kind of do some general, you know, several people, a couple of people on the finance committee, other places have made specific suggestions. You know, we should try to consider those in a way that uses this money best, you know, to start on a path to see whether it might save money and whether we should do a detailed costing, or whether, you know, with some back-of-the-envelope costing, we just don't see how it could make, you know, a difference, you know. In other words, I'm just saying that it's going to, we're going to have to be clever with, you know, $150,000 is not going to go, allow us to design four different building alternatives, right? So that's, we're going to be pretty careful with that. One thing I think also that we need to emphasize going forward is the workers in DPW. There are some, some of the suggestions, for example, talked about, you know, maybe building offices and leaving the crews in the building that exist. I think, you know, everybody in town has to realize that they, that, you know, that we need to consider all the employees in the DPW. We're not just talking about making, making a nice office environment. I think some people who work in, you know, who live in town, they're used to working in an office, and so they, they kind of identify with the office workers. But the, you know, the crews that are the ones that go out and, you know, build our sidewalks and repair our roads, they need, you know, a place to come back to that's safe and efficient and things like that. And I think that we need to put, put those, those folks forward. I think we didn't do a, a super job in letting people know the need. I know we tried a lot, but there were still a whole lot of people who didn't understand the need, some of whom, when I talked to them in detail, they were able to understand the need. So somehow, the general outreach didn't do that. I don't know how that is. I mean, we offered, they could come see the DPW building, what, three times, you know, and a lot of things. But somehow, the bottom line is, I don't think we did a great job in, in putting forth the need. And, you know, finally, I think that, you know, the cost estimate for the, the design, design plans that we started with, you know, the, at first blush, the, the finance committee said that was about 20% too expensive. And one speaker on the town meeting floor said that they said it was 20% too expensive, and we reduced the price by 20%. And we didn't get any other votes on, from the finance committee, which was, which was really disappointing, because in, you know, I think in our view, we did what they asked for. And and it didn't sway anybody. So, you know, that was disappointing.
Jim?
I had a couple of thoughts about next steps. The first is resetting our connection with the finance committee, which I think means lots of one-on-one conversations. Because when we met as a big group, it was like, okay, here's a group of people that have all decided one thing and a group of people have all decided another thing and there was no room for flex. I think individual conversations between, you know, all of us and, you know, all of the finance committee members are going to help us both understand where the flex is, you know, what different people are looking for, what their ideas are. And, you know, sadly, I'm not expecting to get to some, you know, like unanimous vote of the finance committee on a revised plan that we come up with. But a unanimous vote against was a really hard way to go forward. And that was visible to people before the ballot vote because they got their warrant. So I think with individual conversations, we might be able to understand, you know, what are the key things we might need to really figure, think about changing? And for them, for the individuals on the finance committee to really grapple with, yeah, this is way expensive and it's important. What are we going to do? And then, you know, then I think there's some opening for some, you know, at least a not unanimous vote. The other piece I'm thinking about is, when I think about the last override, the operating override, we did have a, you know, an independent organization that could do, you know, active advocacy and that's important when you're looking at a ballot, you know. We can't, we, you know, as a board, we can do things in our official meetings, but we can't say, you know, let's spend money on lawn signs or, you know, that's beyond what we can do. But it's not beyond what an independent organization can do. An independent organization or us, any group could do some of that basic education. And I agree that there is a lot of mystery in town about, you know, even where the DPW building is, what happens in it, who the people are. So I think there's a lot of just sort of humanizing informational stuff that could come out, that could be conveyed more efficiently and accurately and wider if there was an independent group. So Dean, it was really great to hear that people were coming up to you and saying, oh, you know, I wasn't involved, but I'd like to be involved. And some of them might have a role instead of being on the building committee. Maybe they're on this, maybe we encourage them to go off and do a thing on their own. And, you know, that was my other thought.
Alyssa?
Thank you. So I think that, Jim, you hit on something that I wanted to point out is that the suggestion to have new people come onto the building committee who are maybe looking at this from a political angle is something that might not be copacetic because they would then be appointed officials and be more limited in the kind of outreach. So I think your suggestion, Jim, to have a group who can campaign, champion the project, do the outreach separate from the new folks that might come onto the building committee. Yeah, it was, it was very frustrating. I reached out to quite a number of people to ask for some help with outreach and I didn't really get any takers, unfortunately. So I think that we need to be really careful and clarify what different folks will be permitted to do with campaign finance law. And I think that, I think that it's accurate that we did have several communication failures, you know, putting that personal face on the staff at the building and not just, you know, photographs of the walls and the cracks in the walls and such. I've been thinking a lot about the ballot question and the town meeting vote and I know that a lot has changed since 2019. A lot has changed. However, I keep thinking about the order of that. You bring people to town meeting and you present the project and people get a chance to ask questions and get those questions answered and then deliberate on the town meeting floor and then going to the ballot to, you know, affirm their support or their opposition to that project. I think that that's critical because I keep thinking about the fact that the Minuteman Tech School, the borrowing for that was almost $200 million. The replacement of gates and Douglas and West Acton was $116 million and then the fire station, $10 million. Those are, you know, a lot more collectively than this $35 million that we were asking town meeting to borrow. And I think that more outreach about the cost, that that was really in alignment with what facilities cost today. So I think that that is another communication key. Also, this distinction between need and want. I think it's hard when you are presenting what exists today is a 19,000 square foot facility and then what you're proposing is a little bit more than twice that. Of course, people are going to go to, oh, they, you know, they've been doing this work for 55 years in this smaller facility. So why do we need to more than double the size? Even though that information was there and in the details, I think that's a big leap for people to make, like how do you distinguish? And the project changed because we went through the value engineering twice. So people were still at the ballot thinking that there were two conference rooms, not knowing that one of them, the smaller one, had been removed. So I wonder if, Fran, you mentioned visiting a lot of DPW facilities in other communities and you encouraged, you know, finance committee members to go and visit. Maybe we can get photographs. I know we had a photograph of the bunk room, I think it was in Westford. Like, these are the kinds of extravagant, not that they're extravagant because you want people to be able to sleep somewhere other than their truck in, you know, freezing weather. But these are some of the things that are in other communities and other facilities that, you know, we're not including in this one. This is the bare minimum. I mean, we had people on social media wondering why there's a need for a shower. Why can't they just go home and shower? I'm like, well, the DPW director works, you know, an hour away from his home. So maybe some of these staff who are out there cleaning storm drains don't want to sit in their vehicle smelly for that drive home. There's a lot of, I think, outreach and communication. We just have to figure out who's going to do it and in what form, right? You know, it might need to be meet and greet style rather than an interactive planning divisions type forum at the library or maybe both, you know, go all out and do all of the things.
Can I just ask you a quick question for clarification? So, and just to add, they don't sleep in a bunk. They sleep on a couch, which is even worse, but, is a couch. Yeah. So were you suggesting a ballot vote after, after the town meeting?
So annual, we can't do it because it's in the charter, the dates of the annual election and the annual town meeting. I was just thinking, like, maybe that is partially, you know, a key element to be able to have this town meeting forum where people get the information, they see the presentation, they talk about it, they get their questions answered and then the ballot happens later, a week later, three years later in the case of Minuteman. Like, maybe that is a key factor and I don't know how to solve that, you know, whether or not we have a special town meeting. We spend $15,000 to, I don't know. Maybe we should have, maybe we should have made a presentation at the November town meeting where we purchased Weatherby and approved some of our union contracts. You know, if we had the people there in the auditorium, we could have provided this information. But we didn't know the details about the project yet because, you know, it was still going, undergoing value engineering. So it wasn't a suggestion to do it that way. It was just a thought of, like, this is a piece that was missing here because of the timing.
Tara?
Yes, so I-
State your name and address.
Oh, Tara, I'm a mess. So I, I've already been here, all right. I feel like we've got to take FinCom seriously. They don't want to spend that 150 grand on PR to try and sell a project that they don't like. I feel like the agreement was to scope it out with them and figure out how to fit within a budget. The part about having town-sponsored advocacy groups, you know, is really, if you read Chapter 55, I was really appreciative of Nina's reference to that in the memo to FinCom, although I disagreed with her interpretation that they can't post in the Acton Exchange. I feel like it provided every defense to be able to support the FinCom posting anywhere they can as long as it's free and not town resources. It was very clear in Chapter 55 that the town is not supposed to use its resources to promote a specific for or against ballot or town meeting vote. So I urge you to take a look at that and stop trying to sell crap to us. It's insulting, I feel like, to think that if you just educate me more, I'll be like so excited to spend the money that I don't want to spend. I mean, I'm not saying for or against anything. I'm just saying that that's the attitude that I was hearing in the balcony of town meeting with people saying, you know, what are you talking about? You're going to try and educate me to want something I don't want? So it's not necessarily my feeling, I'm just broadcasting that to you. If you really care about public input, start from scratch. Take a look at what Sudbury is doing. They're doing theirs piecemeal and it's cheap, cheap, cheap. They're replacing the roof, they replace the floor, they're putting in the HVAC, I mean, the heat pumps, you know what I mean? They're doing all this stuff really affordably. Look at Harvard's consultants, maybe the consultants-
Sudbury's building isn't as old as ours either. It's newer, it's actually-
Please don't be stuck on an approach and try and sell us the same approach. Please be willing to consider alternatives. The Harvard, it was built their facility, yes, it has to be different than ours and all that, but it's $315 a square foot as opposed to Acton's over 700. So just take a look at this stuff.
So do you want to? It is not a back and forth, but I just feel like there's misinformation-
I would like to correct that that is not accurate.
The Harvard one?
Yep.
I went there and looked at the cost-
Yep, so did I.
And divided by the number of-
Yep, and you were looking at a 2021 needs assessment, but they sent out the bid and it was a $10 million estimate. So with the same division, you end up with, I think it was 657, you add 5% for 2024 to 2025 and the dollar amount was $696 a square foot, which is $4 less than Acton's $700 a square foot. So I hear, I think we all hear what you're saying about, you know, advocacy. Town staff are permitted to share information. I heard some complaints about the poster boards that were up, I mean, project page, tours of the facility. All of that is giving information to the residents, to the taxpayers about the needs and the project and it's all permitted under state law. It's not advocacy for or against, it's informational. These are the existing conditions and that is all that town resources were spent on. The elected officials, however, during, you know, public meetings or private conversations or at Acton TV, we are, as elected officials, permitted to use our own time to do that. We don't have working hours like town staff do. So we hear you that, you know, there are people in the town who don't want to be sold on something that they, that they don't want. But this is the reality, that this is a dire need and this is Acton and it's not Sudbury and it's not Harvard. And the feasibility, I think we're just kind of, I said this at the pre-meeting before town meeting on May 5th. We're very far past, you know, four years beyond the 2021 feasibility study, but these alternatives were looked at. It's more expensive to renovate the building. It's more costly to fix it than to knock it down and build it again. So we do need to use this appropriated $150,000 to do some study, you know, look at the structural integrity of the building, look at, you know, cost out different alternatives. We're not spending $150,000 on a PR campaign. We appropriated that at town meeting in order to get us more information to be able to communicate to residents.
Thank you. I meant to make sure that you scope it out with the FinComs, that you understand what they're willing to live with and not try and sell us on the same project. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, and correct me if I'm wrong, that more people, when the moderator was asking who actually voted for the project, more people voted for the project than against it. It wasn't two-thirds, but in the unofficial vote, I was surprised. Are we moving forward? Yes. So next up, Select Board reorg. This capacity to-
You run this?
I run this?
Yeah.
Okay.
As the current chair, you run this.
I, yep.
So normally you would accept nominations for one position at a time?
Yes.
And then, as for, if one, only one person was nominated for a position, you just ask for an affirmation vote? If two or more people are nominated, you go around and ask for who they vote for? In the past few years, we've done kind of ranked choice voting. So that if, let's say, three people are nominated and it gets two, two, one, then you would drop the one and ask for a vote on the other two? And then go move down to the next position?
Okay.
So we usually do it from chair down?
Yes. Great. Sorry. I was focused on other things. Alyssa?
I would like to nominate Dean for chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Oh, David?
I would like to nominate myself for chair.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. Say a few words. Yep.
I would accept the nomination. You know, I've been on the board six years. I've served as clerk for two years, chair for one year, vice chair for three years. So I think what I see would be my strength to serve another term as chair is that I'm used to being in the minority of things. So I'm, I try to work in a collaborative, cooperative fashion, find things that I can agree with everybody on and try to move ahead with what's best for the entire town and reflect what's best for the entire board. I have never tried and I would not attempt to try to force my opinion on this board.
Thank you. Do you have your hand raised? So I- Why would you like to be chair?
So for me, it's been the longest time since I was last chair, except for Alyssa. So, and my, my term was shortened. So, and my, my term was shortened. So I was only Chair for nine months because I started at the end of the pandemic and a delayed Town Meeting and ended the following year with no pandemic. But before we changed the, the time of Town Meeting and the vote, so I had like between eight and nine months for my--
That's fine.
Uh, Chair. So, and, you know, I, during my, my time, I, you know, always tried to allow anybody to, to speak, say what they'd like to, to say. I was highly criticized at the time for letting Madeline Cruz speak for a long time. And, and I, you know, I tried to run an efficient meeting and be fair to everybody. I also, numerous times in the, during the time I was Chair, you know, individuals on the board asked me for a particular topic to be brought up at, on, at one of our meetings and I made sure that we worked out a plan to get that to happen. So anyway, I would enjoy the opportunity again.
Thank you. I was also going to nominate myself. Dean, pry it out, pry it out. It's been a great learning experience. There is, no doubt--
Are you nominating yourself?
I did nominate myself.
Then you need a second.
Oh, I need a second. Sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am, this is sort of a concession speech. I, I just have enjoyed the time here. There is a little added level of stress to the Chair position. And the ALG process has been a huge learning curve. It would probably take another year or so to, to really master that for me. But I, I've, I've enjoyed my time as Chair. Jim?
Before we move right to the voting, would it be appropriate to say more about, you know, why we're voting a particular way? We might be convincing each other of something. I don't know. I'd like to say something about who I'm going to support or we could just vote.
I don't have a real big reason. I've enjoyed agenda setting. I think that's an important part of, of the process. I, I think that some agenda items from, that I bring forth might look different than other folks that, that set the agenda. So, yeah.
I think he was asking if he could make comments.
Oh, sorry.
Or if we all have--
I was just making, I thought you were asking me a question.
Oh, okay. No, I was just asking if it was appropriate for me to say why I might vote the way I would--
Oh, do it.
Okay. So what I've discovered during my time on the board is that, to my surprise, I'm more of an institutionalist than I thought. That I am, I, I like, I like the way we have a rotation where people go from being clerk to vice chair and chair. It seems reasonable, it seems fair, it seems, you know. So from that perspective, I see Dean as the vice chair. He should be Chair next. And, you know, where, where if I was, you know, maybe to draw a diagram of ideological connections, I might end up being closer to Mr. Martin here. I, I think both of you did a very good job as Chair, in particular with, with making sure that all points of view were represented and that if people wanted to talk about things, you made, you figured out a way, you both figured out ways of getting them on the agenda. So I'm not concerned about, you know, Dean's more conservative point of view having some sort of detrimental effect on the functioning of the board. So, you know, so I'm torn. I think you both do a good job, but I'm going to end up voting for Dean on the first ballot there.
Well, I guess. So Alyssa?
Dean.
Dean.
Dean. If you can't beat him, join him, right?
I'll, I'll vote for, for Dean as well.
Dean too.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Appreciate your confidence.
I'm still running the meeting. This is where it's like bizarre, you know?
You can make a choice. We have done both--
Yep.
Where the, the gavel--
What do you think? What do you think?
You can hang on to that for a minute.
We've done the one where the, sorry, where the gavel moved after that vote or where the, the old Chair continued with all the positions and then the gavel moved?
Thank you. I will accept nominations for Vice Chair and I would like to take the opportunity to nominate Alyssa as Vice Chair.
Second?
Third.
I have nothing different to say.
You can say something?
Yeah, you're willing? Yeah, yes, you at least say you're willing.
I, I am willing to serve as Vice Chair, although I'm really going to miss being clerk.
Hmm.
Are you?
I am. Because I make so many additions and edits and it's a lot easier to do that when I just have control of Google Doc. I don't have to email somebody. But I'm gonna, I'm going to exercise some zen of letting go of a little bit of that.
Excellent.
And, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be having some more time this coming school year, not working. So I will be available for ALG meetings and ribbon cuttings and swearing in of new firefighters and agenda-setting meetings.
Thank you. Do we, do we--
It's hard to let go.
Yeah.
Stop, stop.
Do we, do we have any other nominees? I think we've already effectively taken a--
That was unanimous.
Okay. Accept that as a unanimous vote?
Do we have to vote?
Yep, take the vote. Jim?
Hi. Yes for Alyssa.
David?
Also yes for Alyssa.
Yes for Alyssa.
Yes for Alyssa.
Yes, thank you.
It's unanimous. All right. Now, I know that you don't want to give up the pen, but I will accept nominations for clerk.
I would like to nominate Fran for clerk.
Are you trying to torture me? No, 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 I am happy to do a job. Yes.
Jim?
I, I would nominate David for clerk.
Any other nominations?
Do you--
Wait, did someone second Fran?
I think Fran did. Did I?
Did you second yourself?
I, I did kind of second myself.
You just have to say second instead of I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second myself.
Okay. David, would you like to make any comments?
So I, I was clerk a long, long time ago. I don't remember exactly. I think it was actually, I, I think it was after I was Chair. But, because that was, it was really weird in the beginning after the pandemic. But anyway, yeah, I, I, I don't think I'm as fastidious as Alyssa. But I'm very willing to do the job.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone or shall I take a vote?
I, I, that sort of was my comment. I have never been clerk. I'm happy to throw my hat in and I too don't think I'd be able to live up to your expectation.
Okay, we'll take the vote. Jim?
David?
I'll vote for me too.
I'll vote for David too.
Vote for David as well.
I'll vote for David too. So it's unanimous.
May I say that it's actually very nice to have unanimous votes? Not, not for, not for clerk, but for, for all of us. And I think we did, I think we did last time too. And anyway, I think it's very nice.
All right. Well, so my first official action would be to ask for motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or adjourned?